Thank you, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission on Wednesday, April 8.
Kane?
President.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Bundami?
Here.
Chair Birch?
Here.
And Commissioner O'Donnell has an excused absence.
I'd like you all to please stand and join Vice Chair Bundami in doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the planning commission conducting its business on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate. Written comments about agenda items that are submitted prior to meetings are always helpful. At the meetings, there are two opportunities. First, in the verbal communication period, an individual may speak on any topic which is not on the agenda. And second, any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of an agendized item. We ask if you are going to speak that you please fill out the speaker card, which is in the seat backs in front of you. I would also like to ask, considering the agenda we have in front of us tonight, I do know that we have an item that may solicit discussion on maybe a coinciding application. We would ask if you have interest in speaking on that, that you please do so during the verbal communication portion of the meeting. Do we have any items on the consent calendar this evening?
No.
And do we have any continued items?
We have one requested continuance for item number one. We get a motion for that.
Do we have a motion? Commissioner Kane?
I approve the requested continuance.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Bundami?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. So, these are all, like, something didn't print.
So just, we do, I believe, have the March 25 minutes?
Yes.
So if we can get a motion for that as well?
Yes. Commissioner Bundami?
I'll move to approve the minutes for March 25.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that.
All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. In addition to sitting on the Planning Commission, members also sit on various committees and commissions within the town. Do we have any reports tonight? None? All right. So we'll now move to the verbal communication portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak, like I said, please fill out a card. I have one card right now. John Shepherdson?
So, we have this Green Bike Lanes ribbon-cutting event coming up, so I would encourage everybody when that's here, anybody who's watching, to attend that event. Secondly, this is the first, I'll call it a Town Biker Award. Stephen Conway, our finance guy, bikes to work. So I have somewhere in one of my pockets a $2 item choose that I would offer to Mr. Conway if it's not an ethics violation for this award. So I'll put that here right now. Next, the Sheriff, Police Department question presented, should the town seek a third-party review of our police department to potentially save $6 million a year, 120 million over 20 years? Summary argument, yes. The sheriff communities are safe or safer or safe. That's Saratoga and Cupertino. With the sheriff, we can save millions. Los Gatos budget's 14.2 million. Asking, and I'm asking for a comprehensive review, perhaps by management partners. Two basic factors, safety and financial cost. Saratoga, according to Safewise, is the safest city in the state. Los Gatos is third. Cupertino, 12th. All serviced by the sheriff. Los Gatos is not in the top 50. Response times overall, the sheriff is superior to the Los Gatos when we're using Los Gatos versus Cupertino. Other benefits of the sheriff, helicopter. Now we get to the finances. Los Gatos is $9.6 million more than Saratoga. Cupertino versus Cupertino, Los Gatos is $4.3 million more than Cupertino, and it's about double our population. Apples to apples. If you break it down in terms of the cost per citizen for our police department, we're, Saratoga is about $158 a citizen, Cupertino $175, Los Gatos $417. And that's approximate numbers. So why switch? Why look for cost savings? Because we're looking at opportunity costs. If we put money towards the police department, then it cuts into other services that could be offered. So we have 40 million in unfunded repairs. We need to repair the Almond Grove streets. Traffic's a problem. This is things that we could do if we had the money, bus program, tax cut, community center, performing arts, and dependency on large projects. So with that, and you can read that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherdson. Do we have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. As there's no more speakers in the verbal communication portion, we're now going to move on to the public hearings. We'll move on to item number one, which is actually item number two, but since we moved to item number one, I'll now refer to this as item number one. This is a portion of our agenda to consider a general plan amendment application, GP-14-002, which is a public hearing to review and provide a recommendation to the Town Council regarding the 2015 to 2023 housing element. Are there any disclosures from the commissioners on this particular item? No? Ms. Pravetti, I understand you're going to be giving us the report today.
Thank you very much. Tonight is a very important evening because the Planning Commission is holding its formal public hearing regarding the housing element. At our last meeting, we conducted a public workshop to provide the Planning Commission with some background and overview of what the housing element is and some of the discussion points that occurred during the process. The town went through a very public process in the development of its housing element for the planning period of 2015, 2023. We had a council-appointed Housing Element Advisory Board on which we had several planning commissioners serve, including Commissioners Hanson, Erickson, and Talisfor. Prior representation during 2014 included former Chair Smith, as well as current council member Seok, then Planning Commissioner Seok. So the Planning Commissioner Commission was represented throughout the entire process. The public was also invited to provide their comments throughout the process, and this evening we will also provide opportunity for the public to provide their public testimony in advance of your deliberations. The housing element is really a plan for housing for all income segments of our town, and the goal is to identify adequate locations for housing of different types and to make sure that it meets the town's goals and is consistent with our overall long-term plan called the general plan. Last meeting, you, we discussed some of the different options considered by the Housing Element Advisory Board, and I do want to point out page four in your staff report this evening has the two tables that really were the essence of the Housing Element Advisory Board's discussion. Clearly, where we locate housing is an important concern for our community, and we want to make sure that we give that the thought that it deserves. Table three identifies the sites that were identified back in June of 2014. After receiving comments from the state, the Housing Element Advisory Board took a fresh look at the sites and reassigned those sites to table four, which essentially shifted the housing sites from the affordable housing overlay sites to the North 40 specific plan. Many of the other strategies remain the same, such as the use of second units, enhancing our second unit program, and other parameters. I point this out because I think this is one of the places where the Planning Commission may wish to have some discussion and may want to focus on one element of its recommendation to the Town Council. It's also perfectly fine if the Planning Commission, we do need a vote or a majority motion, but it's perfectly fine if there are a variety of opinions. Your staff will do its best to convey to the council the variety of opinions on our Planning Commission. In addition, the Housing Element Advisory Board came up with additional recommendations for council consideration. Those are outlined on page five of your staff report and continue to the top of page six. I bring those to your attention because the Planning Commission and your review of development applications, you're so close to these topics that you may have additional recommendations that you would like to forward on to the Town Council. So you're certainly free to pass along the Housing Element Advisory Board's recommendations, but if there are additional ones, we're happy, again, as your staff, to move those forward. With that, I'd like to just say that staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the housing element. The next step of the process, should that be your recommendation, it goes to the Town Council. The Town Council is tentatively set to hear this item on May 5. They will also conduct a public hearing and take additional public testimony. You should have received last, yesterday, as well as at your place, an addendum to the report. There was some additional information that one of your fellow commissioners put together, and so we wanted to make sure the full commission had that information available as you go through it. Staff is available to answer any additional questions. We recognize that there's a lot of detail and a lot of information, and we're looking forward to your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pravetti. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
When you say that staff is recommending adoption of the document as we have it, does that, does that include the four recommendations from the Housing Element Committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions right now? All right. Seeing none, we're going to open this up to our speakers. If you have not already turned in a speaker card and you would like to speak, we please ask that you do so now, and please provide it to staff. When you do come up to speak, we ask that you remember to pull the microphone close to you and state your name clearly. Jack Benada, please. I'd like to remind you that you have three minutes, and when the light turns yellow, you are down to 30 seconds.
With luck, I won't even come close to three minutes. My name is Jack Benada. I'm at 165 Euclid Avenue in Los Gatos. Two disclosures, I live on the south side of Los Gatos and I use Highway 17 at Highway 9, or I enter and exit Highway 17 from Highway 9. Why I say that will come up in a minute. I do want to say, I have followed the Heeb hearings, not completely, but in different parts. I think they did some remarkable work. I think that they made some brilliant decisions and discoveries along the way about the housing element, and I thought they made some good, comprehensive decisions. There was some discussion about spreading the housing through Los Gatos so that it was kind of balanced between north and south. And I started on that side myself, that I thought there should be some balance, but as I looked at Los Gatos, I think the density is much heavier in the south end of Los Gatos than it is at the north end. And Los Gatos has, south end has less of a capability in terms of streets and infrastructure to handle the traffic. I did think the South Bay and the North 40 were perfect sites. I thought the Los Gatos Lodge was a very poor choice for high density, mainly because there's just not much room for entering and exiting traffic to Highway 17. I believe that Higgins will be tough, but I like it, in part due to its proximity. But again, my favorites would be South Bay and North 40. Given the amount of the thorough analysis by the advisory board, I would encourage the approval of the housing element, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Thank you. Next is Maria Risto.
I was also a member of the, I was a member of the Housing Element Advisory Board, and I was here for the study session the other week. I would just want to emphasize that with the information that you received from the Housing Element Board, you saw where we started and where we ended, and understand that that was more than a year process with a lot of discussion with staff, HCD, and an evolution that went from initially talking about taking 57 units from the North 40 and going to a recommendation to earmark 364 units on that housing element. Sorry, I need to think this through. So my, the initial concern was if you talk about 57 units, those 57 low-income units will only be built if approximately 364 units get built. So the thought process was, let's take credit for everything that can be built there. The North 40 will eventually get built. We don't know how, but you're marking it now. If the specific plan goes through, and you have no control over that right now, and if 364 units go through with the plan that you have in front of you, that takes care of a good chunk of the housing that we're required to plan for. If the specific plan is not approved, then there's a step that can be taken, and another site can be identified, an AHAS site. Or if more housing gets built at the North 40, that doesn't really help us. We get the 364. If less does, if it gets approved to 200, then another site needs to be brought up. But right now, just understand that the housing element went through a lot of concern over, gee, if we pick the North 40, are we saying that it's going to pass? It's not. It's a completely different process. This is not tied to the specific plan. This is just a plan, and let's see how things unfold, and there's contingencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Jeff Loffrich?
Hi, my name is Jeff Lockridge, 109 Pasailora. I'll be speaking tonight not only as a resident, but also as a member of the Housing Element Advisory Board. And first, I'd like to say that when we talk about the housing element, we need to be very clear that we are not talking about the specific plan. It's easy to confuse the two, but they are completely separate. I would like to speak in support of the Housing Element Advisory Board's official recommendation. From my involvement, not only as a member of the advisory board, as well as my involvement with our previous housing element, I can categorically state that this issue is very complex. One of the many reasons it's so complicated is that since the last housing element, the state has changed a few of the rules. Previously, we only had to plan, not build, 619 units. And even though that still sounds the same now, since we only have to plan, not build, the outcome will be much different. The state has forced Los Gatos to remove many constraints, which will likely result in real developments, not just plans. The restructured Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, AHAS, which we used almost exclusively in our previous housing element and its effect on our town, had to be rethought. Actual rezoning, as opposed to just using the AHAS, was now an option on the table. The months of hard work that we have done over the past year on the board have resulted in a recommendation. At our first meeting, there was not much consensus on anything, but we worked and worked at it. Over the next several months, we discussed and argued options, asked many clarifying questions of staff. Staff, in turn, asked questions of the HCD, which is the state agency that will ultimately decide whether our housing element is certified or not. We again reviewed and evaluated our options and how they would impact both schools and traffic. We tried to determine what made the most sense for Los Gatos. We made our best effort to suggest options that would inflict the minimum impact on the town, and we tried to maximize the results to meet the state mandated RENA requirements. The housing element recommendation is to utilize the housing units already approved or built, secondary units, units from the residentially-zoned Oka Road sites, units on the Oak Rim AHAS property, and units on the North 40. It comes down to weighing the risk that the town is willing to take. Either approve an option that might result in a process risk if one or more of our recommendations fail to produce the proposed development versus the real risk that Los Gatos will face with developments that will severely impact our traffic situation around the existing schools. Please don't throw away all our hard work. Support the Housing Element Advisory Board's official recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Angela Durner?
I'm Angela Durner, a proud resident of the Almond Grove, and I just really have three questions that are still going around in my mind that I want to share with you and hope that somehow your discussions after the public testimony can address some of these items. Primarily, I'm referring to item two on the agenda, and if you look at the current table, the proposed table, I'm just wondering how the allocation between the very low, low, moderate, all on North 40 are going to be accommodated? I mean, you're looking at basically 93% of those units being moderate to lower-than-moderate housing, and the original, I thought, in the EIR, the Revised ERI that was attached to the agenda, showed, I think it was section 1.44, said that the current overlay is 20%, minimum of 20% moderate and below. But this recommendation is 93% moderate to low. And I'm just wondering how that, how that gets handled at North 40, how the developers make that work and still make it fiscally possible? So that is a huge question that I have. The other is, in relation to those numbers, everyone talks moderate to low, but if you look at the page two of that same item two, those same units, we're talking about very low being a family of four of $53,000 income. And so if you start dovetailing those dollar amounts into 93% of these units being for family of fours, those concepts below that, I just have a hard time seeing how we can justify that or how it will ever be accomplished. The other question I have is how the density bonuses will be dealt with. If council comes through and decides that there's less than 364 units, the developer will probably just tag on these density bonuses that could even exceed what he's building on top of the 364. Is that how he may recoup some of the responsibility of developing all of these lower-income units? So those are some of the bigger questions. I also had final question on how the remaining AHAS sites are going to be rezoned or left alone. We're referring to one AHAS site in this particular recommendation. I guess there's, I don't remember how many, there's four, maybe five others. I'm wondering what the proposed changes to our existing code and overlays are going to be handled. I didn't really see anything in here that said that would be reversed or changed. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you. I do not have any additional speaker cards. So we're now going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any of the commissioners have any questions of staff conversation or would like to venture a motion. Commissioner Talisfor?
The last speaker had some, had two questions, and I'm wondering if Ms. Pravetti or could address that, those questions. Thank you. Certainly. So the first question had to do with the distribution of the housing units across the different income categories in table four, which is on page four of your staff report. And essentially, for the North 40 specific plan, we anticipate that the density of the housing will be at least 20 units to the acre. And for state housing element purposes, that is considered affordable housing. So we have discretion in terms of how we wish to distribute those housing units. And so given that all 364 units was the, was the recommendation of the Housing Element Advisory Board, we plugged them in accordingly in order to meet the distribution of the income requirements. So it was just a simple math exercise. How that translates into what a developer ultimately builds is an unknown, but we don't need to worry about that right now because this is a plan for housing, and how this happens will be the subject of future applications and future decisions, both before you as well as the Town Council. Do you want me to entertain the question? Yes.
Matt, she, there was another question.
I think there was a follow-up on that. Right. Yes, there is a follow-up. But I did have a question with what you just said, because there's this rezoning, this at the North 40, it's on page five of our staff report, it's a rezoning of 18.2 acres. What do we do with the .2? Well, again. That become open space? Well, again, the entire specific plan area is about 44 acres, and some of that property is already zoned for residential use. So again, for purposes of the housing element, we need to identify the minimum amount of land at a density of 20 units to the acre to yield the 364. So that's why there's the .2. It may be that we only need 17 acres and maybe the density is higher, but we need approximately 18.2 acres. And so I think then the follow-up question was the remaining AHAS sites and how they would be rezoned. Right. And that's, that's a really good question. And the Housing Element Advisory Board had quite a bit of discussion about should the overlay be pulled off of those other sites? Should there be additional code changes to the municipal code to have clarity around those sites? And after much discussion, that was decided that those would be future actions for the council to consider. It's possible that the council, they'll need to weigh the pros and cons of that, in other words. So there are perhaps advantages of keeping them on the books, especially as we still go through our housing element and our specific plan process. We may need a replacement site. So there, one advantage might be, here's a bank of possible replacement sites. The disadvantage, of course, is that there are, there may be development pressure to move in and start building on those AHAS sites now before the AHAS gets pulled off. I do want to assure the commission, though, that the Housing Element Advisory Board was very clear that the only site that would have the change in the affordability restrictions in the code would be the Housing Element site of Oak Rim. And so all the other affordability restrictions for the remaining AHAS sites would, would essentially remain in place. And so far, the market has demonstrated that they, they aren't able to, to perform at those levels. So that will be a future decision for the council. If the Planning Commission has a recommendation as to those other sites, that could be part of your recommendation to the full council. It is, it's a complex issue all by itself, so I would advise that we focus primarily on the housing element, and if we're able to get through that piece, if you have, if there's additional time given, your other agenda items, then maybe we can consider other follow-up.
Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Kane.
I just had a follow-up question for you to help answer Angela's question. So, you know, if I heard you correctly, the HCD, which has the responsibility for certifying the housing element, is going to primarily look at the fact that we had so many units zoned, 20, in a density of 20 dwelling units per acre. So the North 40 specific plan gets approved a couple of years down the road or whatever happens, and it turns out that, that 75% of the units are above moderate, the HCD isn't going to come back and say, you put these in the wrong bucket and you have to relook at things.
That's right.
I just wanted you to confirm that because I think that's what people were worried about. Okay.
Right. It's the density that's driving the affordability. It's the density that's driving the affordability for housing elements.
So as long as the North Forty specific plan is approved with 18.2 acres zoned at 20 dwelling units per acre, it's irrelevant what income categories that it happens in.
Right. For purposes of the housing element. And we will be doing, you know, if and when development occurs there, then we would be doing annual reports back up to the state in terms of how did we actually do in terms of meeting housing in those different income categories.
Okay. And then I was hoping you could answer Angela's third question as well about the density. You know, if it were the development proposal to come up with less units, would it be likely that the developer would want to take advantage of the density bonus?
So I can't speak for a developer because I don't know, you know, what they're considering from a business perspective, but I think it's entirely possible and perhaps reasonable that if the council were to reduce the number of housing units that the specific plan could accommodate, that they would try and make that up through density bonus in one form or another. But that's a totally separate topic and really more hypothetical.
Well, let me ask the question for the benefit of everyone. My understanding is that under no circumstances can we count density bonuses towards our arena numbers.
That's absolutely correct, and thank you for putting that on the record.
Commissioner Kane, did you still have a question?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Commissioner Vodami?
You mentioned giving annual reports to the HDC, but once we get certified, we're good for eight years, right?
That's correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a question about the wording of Action HOU 1.7 and Action HOU 2.2. And while I understand the difference between one of us talking about a development and one of us talking about the potential development of the Oak Rim site, in the wording of 2.2, it contemplates, it has an if statement. If in fact it doesn't, if in fact the town approves a development which doesn't meet these things, then the town will take these subsequent actions. In Action HOU 1.7, it just says, it declares that the town, in fact, is going to rezone that area. So my question is, does that become a presumptive requirement of the specific plan? And is it, because it isn't conditional, at least my reading of it, it isn't conditional, it is, it's pretty prescriptive. And is that presumptive with respect to the specific plan? And should the wording not be that? I mean, so, I mean, you understand my question. It's like, it seems to me the present wording of it makes it a presumptive requirement of the specific plan.
Yeah. So for housing element purposes, this was one of the specific comments that we got from the Housing and Community Development Department in Sacramento. They said they needed to see a definitive action regarding the rezoning of property for the specific plan. It's not presumptive. It's essentially saying that it is an action item that's in our housing element. As we know, our town council is now deliberating the specific plan. If they choose in their wisdom to do something less than 364 or less than 20 units to the acre, then the same language essentially from 2.2 would also pertain to this action item, even though it's not explicitly stated. They would still need to find a replacement site to meet the balance of the requirements.
Okay, so I follow you. Okay, so why would it not be better to include that language now?
Again, you know, we're, it's probably more of an oversight that there wasn't the parallel language in all of the items. You know, similarly, we didn't necessarily need to put it in 2.2 because it's assumed that if we don't achieve the density there either, we would have to find a replacement site. So you're right, the parallel construction for the two action items should be the same. And if that's your recommendation, you know, that's an edit that we could certainly add.
No, I guess, I just didn't want us to trip over that inconsistency with HCD is the only, is the reason for asking the question.
Thank you.
So it just depends on, but I defer to your judgment about whether that's important or not.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
With the chair's permission, and only with the chair's permission, I'm wondering if I can be permitted to apply the Leonardo's Principle to this question. Two weeks ago, town council had an elephant, and it was an issue that was huge, and they wondered if they'd get out within a week. And what Councilman Leonardo's proposed was an upfront motion to approve the question before them and then go through it piece by piece and entertain any amendments that would be forthcoming. I think that would give us a roadmap and would be a way for us to eat this element. And by the way, I'd spent a number of hours last week reading this tome, and it took me longer than War and Peace for the clarity of War and Peace. This was very difficult. But I sincerely appreciate the effort by our commissioners who worked on this committee and Mr. Lockridge and others who worked on this committee, because I think they produced a grade A product on a very, very difficult and potentially controversial subject. In particular, Commissioner Hanson, who schooled me on this matter, I did talk to her at length about this, and she gave me the Menlo Park fact sheet, which I think every citizen concerned with this issue ought to read. There was a movie with Denzel Washington where he said, "Explain it to me like I'm a six-year-old." And this does. And it tells us what we have to do, what can happen if we don't, and it gives us ways and means to get that done. So going back to the original and hearing no objection from the chair, I'd like to make a motion.
The chair hadn't had a chance to speak.
I don't.
I think that that would be a great idea. Are you ready to make a motion?
Yes, I am.
All right. Commissioner Kane?
I recommend that we, I make a motion that we recommend to the town council that it adopt the housing element, associated general plan amendment, application GP 14-002, and the addendum to the general plan, final EIR, and to include in that recommendation that they adopt the recommendations from the Housing Element Advisory Board, the four points that are attached to staff's memorandum.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
I will second that motion. And when I second that motion, I'd also like to thank the committee for an absolute amazing job of such a complex issue. I'm still grappling with some of the, some elements of it. But for you all to stick with it for that long, for over, about two years, I think it was. And also, I want to thank and applaud the public that came forward and had their voice heard as well. I know that everybody working together accomplished this, so I will gladly second this motion.
Thank you. I think that's a sentiment that we all agree with. Commissioner Erickson?
So just a question for the chair. I had an additional question or two of the staff, but I was trying to be courteous to other planning commissioners and not roll out all the questions at one time. So is the other, are the other questions moot at this point?
No, absolutely not. I think that we were looking to have a motion, and now we'll start going through the points of discussion based on the motion. So if you have additional questions, comments, please make them.
So in the existing, so in the existing housing element, there's a goal, HOU 7, which is, sets a goal for the jobs, household, housing balance in the town. That goal was eliminated in this draft, and I don't have a recollection, even though I sat on the Housing Element Advisory Board, about why that was eliminated as a goal.
Mr. Erickson, if you're looking at a specific page, would you mind sharing that with us?
No, it's, that goal is in the existing housing element plan.
And it's not referenced in here at all?
Yeah, so that's, the question is, why did we not have a goal about job-household ratio in this plan? It's just, I don't remember us specifically eliminating that kind of a goal. Because the rest of the goals are essentially the same. Some of the policies have been modified and some of the actions have been modified, and we talked through all of those.
We're going to need to do a little bit of research on that one for you. It wasn't, I think that was probably an early text edit that occurred early in the process. So I don't think, I don't recall it being discussed in the last 11 months of the process. So it may have just been a cleanup simply from the prior housing element. We can check the general plan because currently, goal HOU 7 pertains to green building and energy conservation practices. So it may have been that our general plan had changed, and so that goal was different. There may be others who have better recollection than I.
Like Commissioner Erickson, I didn't think it should be admitted from the housing element. In fact, one of the recommendations from the Housing Element Advisory Board was, and I might have been the one who made the recommendation, is that our ratio is out of line with what's expected, you know, and normal and typical in the valley. And so the recommendation in this motion is to have the town council consider it, but to not even have it in the housing element is, I think, a glaring omission that needs to be addressed. Because that is a major factor by which most housing elements are evaluated by the, you know, the nonprofit developers and all the grassroots groups, and we should at least be looking at it and deciding whether or not there's an issue.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
I guess without, for the moment, without worrying about what the origin of, I guess I would ask the staff their professional opinion, is it a good thing to take it out or leave it in? You know, it's without worrying about why it's not in there for the moment. I mean, in your professional judgment, is it a good thing to leave it in or take it out?
Well, professionally, being someone who's studied jobs, housing balance quite a bit, I would agree with the commission that it should be in there.
So Commissioner Erickson, would you like to make that a point in the motion, that you would like to have that included?
I would defer to the expertise that Ms. Pervetti brings to this issue, which is quite extensive.
As would we all.
If anyone doesn't understand that.
All right. Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion in the second or? Great.
That's agreeable.
Do we have any other comments, discussion questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Well, I had a couple recommendations I wanted to add to the motion. One was something that came up with the Housing Element Advisory Board towards the end, and it actually came up recently in a couple of developments that have been submitted to this planning commission. And that is about addressing the need for senior housing, which is definitely a goal of the housing element. Right now, there's nothing in the housing element specifically or our residential design guidelines which encourages or requires single-family homes, especially new ones, to have a bedroom on the first floor. And we recently looked at a development in which case there was very few units did, and we were told that it was, you know, intended to be marketed to, among others, to seniors. And I can't think of any senior that would want to buy a home that didn't have the master bedroom on the first floor. And so I wanted to bring up that I think that the housing element needs to be modified with a more specific goal, and perhaps the residential design guidelines as well, to strongly encourage, if not require, new development, new single-family homes to have a master bedroom on the first floor. So if the maker of the motion would be willing to consider adding that, that's one recommendation. Should I let you?
Can I ask you a question before we go there? Are you specifically saying if it's new homes that are being built, that are being designated as senior housing, have a master bedroom on the first floor? Are you saying any?
Well, since it's been well identified in many, and it's also specified in the housing element, that the majority of the needs are going to be for senior housing going forward in the next eight years, I'm saying all single-family homes should be strongly encouraged, if, at least strongly encouraged, to have the master bedroom on the first floor. Because it's not just seniors, it could also be people that have disabilities or other issues. You know, I lived in Texas for any number of years, and you could not find a house where the master bedroom was not on the first floor. And so I'm saying that I think we should at least have a strongly encouraged language in the housing element for that, if not explicitly in the residential design guidelines. But I'd leave it up to staff, and council would have to consider this as well, to take what form it should take.
I think personally, I could understand and encouraging, but I think you're going to have a lot of parents that would maybe come and look at homes that don't want a master bedroom, and then the other bedroom's upstairs, so I don't think we could place it as a requirement. But I could see it being an encouragement particularly in dwellings that are designated as senior housing. Would that be an acceptable way to state that with the motion?
That would work for me.
Okay. Does the maker of the motion in the second agree with that?
We're making recommendations to council.
Yes, this is just recommendations.
And whether it's lawful, you know, if it fits in the code, I think the heart is in the right place, and I would accept that addition to the motion.
And I would, I think it has merit. I've thought about that myself. It certainly would, I think, fit in some kind of a phrase that would be encourage a variety of, you know, plans that might include or could include, you know, I think that we need to do that.
Commissioner Erickson, you look like you had a comment about that?
I guess it seems to me that that, I think the idea has merit. It seems to me it belongs in the residential design guidelines, not in the housing element. And we have some other HEAB recommendations to consider, and I would be much more comfortable adding this as one of the recommendations and not inserting it as a specific action item or something in the housing element, but as one of the other items that one would consider.
My motion was to recommend this to council, along with the other recommendations.
And that's how I understood it.
Right? Any other comments? Commissioner Vodami? Eden? Commissioner Erickson?
Then I misunderstood Commissioner Kane's motion. I didn't interpret Commissioner Kane's motion to include those other items, but did it?
It did. It included those four items.
Yes, it does.
Commissioner Hanson?
And I had an additional recommendation on top of the HEAB recommendations, and that is relative to the AHAAS. In light of all the comments that happened, you know, having sat on the Housing Element Advisory Board, it became clear during all the discussions that the housing element or the affordable housing overlay zone didn't necessarily accomplish the intent that it really meant, meaning that the trade-off between having housing dispersed across the town versus having, you know, another 200 or 300 units in the Los Gatos Lodge area was a real issue, which caused the Housing Element Advisory Board to change its recommendation. That being said, I know the Housing Element Advisory Board did talk about the AHAAS and opted not to make a specific recommendation about what to do with it. And as it stands right now, you know, those remaining four sites would continue to have the 100%, you know, affordability requirements on all of the four remaining sites. But the point is, I think that we need to add to our recommendation to ask town council to send the AHAAS back to the general plan committee to look at it and decide, A, do we still need the AHAAS given that we've satisfied the housing element? B, do we want to keep those sites in there? And C, do the guidelines and requirements, for example, do we want to have single-family homes as a housing type and so forth? I think that we should ask, recommend to the town council that, along with what was already in the HEAB recommendation, that the entire AHAAS program be looked at by the general plan committee, to make sure that that's what the intent was and what we wanted, because things have changed since it was established. There's no specific recommendation about how to change it, it's just to send it back to the general plan committee, given the adoption of the housing element, to look at that. Would the maker of the motion consider that?
I'd like some feedback from staff on that. Is it practical? Is it warranted?
I think in light of the community discussion at the Housing Element Advisory Board, I think sending it back to the general plan committee is an excellent idea. That is the purpose of the general plan committee. They already have significant background in AHOS. So I think it would be a great place to start. The community would be welcome to participate in that process, have opportunity for public comment, provide letters, et cetera. And I appreciate how the questions were stated as questions and not necessarily, you know, it leaves it open for that conversation to happen with appropriate action later to come before both planning commission and council. So I, I think, I think it's a fine recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Then I would find the addition to the motion that I made acceptable. Second of the motion.
Yes.
Do we have any other comments? Commissioner Erickson?
So, I'll be supporting the motion, but I'd like to make some comments for the record with the permission of the chair. So during the last several years that I've served on the planning commission, I brought to the commission a keen interest in housing issues. And in particular, how affordability of housing plays a major role in shaping the composition and character of a community and is an important indicator of the values of a community. I've been keenly aware and, and with the help particularly of the staff, of the critical role that housing plays in developing a sustainable community and supporting employment growth. And it's really critical for the planning of housing and transportation to be carefully Because of my keen interest in it, I've made it my business to really learn a lot about this issue. So I've studied the government codes, I've studied the density bonus law, I've studied Senate Bill 75, Senate Bill 50. I've tracked, I have spent a considerable amount of time understanding ABAG's methodology, understanding the role of the Department of HCD and so forth, and looking at programs that support affordability, housing, looking at affordability indexes and so forth. So I, I bring all that to my, I brought all that background and experience to the considerations of this. And the, this, this review of the housing element presented a tremendous challenge and opportunity to the town of Los Gatos. The challenge was to meet the state law requirements, to meet what I would call the letter of the law. And with great staff assistance and a lot of community input and a lot of hard work by the Housing Element Advisory Board, we have before us a proposal that meets the letter of the law. The compelling argument for me to pull the AHOS sites out of it was not about traffic, was not about school impact. The compelling argument were made by our friends from Grosvenor, Summerhill, and Eden Housing about if we were to retain those affordable housing overlay zones and reduce what we needed to reduce, we would create an unlevel playing field for the development of it. That was the major concern and the major driver for me to support the plan which is in front of us, even though it stands in stark contrast to the discussions in the last general plan element, the last general plan update and housing element, the latest revision to the below-market price housing and the AHOS, which all reflected a clear community value of don't ghettoize affordable housing in this town and put it all in the same place. So we, so I, I had to weigh that very carefully. And since this was really about meeting the letter of the law and that challenge, I can support it. That being said, I do that reluctantly when I think we missed an opportunity as a town as we go forward. And that was the opportunity to think creatively about how we address affordability of housing, which is a growing keen issue in the Bay Area, the Silicon Valley, and in this town. So we left essentially all the goals the same. We modified some of the policies. We modified many of the action items. But those were really to meet the letter of the law. And we didn't have a very rich, if any, discussion about how do we address affordable housing in this community. So we missed an opportunity. And an opportunity that I believe will come back to haunt us. Because we won't do this again for another several years. And the problem that's acute in the Bay Area and the Silicon Valley and is becoming more acute in this community is not going to get better in the next five to seven to eight years. It's only going to get worse. So I agree absolutely with what it says in the front of the general plan and that this is a very special community. It's got very special people in it. It's got people that have accomplished wonderful, amazing things in their lives. And we have not tapped into that resource to help us understand how we can accept a leadership role in addressing that, the spirit and the intent of the affordability issue. That if you read ABAG's documentation, you read the housing, the HCD stuff, and you read the state laws, they're pretty clear about that. And if you read our own general plan, which has a specific goal about making housing accessible to all income levels, and you read our vision statement about supporting a diverse community, I believe we've missed an opportunity to engage the community in what is a key issue that will haunt us when we didn't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Do we have any additional discussion? Commissioner Talasfor?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we include also, under the other HEB recommendations, there's a paragraph that's not bulleted as a recommendation. And it would go along with the general plan, and I meant to tag it along with what you would, returning this to the, anyway, AHOS to the general plan. And it, what it says is, the HEB discussed the possibility of retaining a community forum to discuss housing issues and acknowledge that the existing general plan committee serves this function. I think that's a really good recommendation, if that, I don't know how the rest of my commissioners feel about that.
I'm not sure how I understand your question.
It's not a question. It's a recommendation that was in, that's in, that's in the staff report under other HEB recommendations, but it's not bulleted. And I just wanted to make sure it was included.
And maybe I can clarify, I, I think what, there was discussion about setting up a separate body, a separate group of people. And perhaps retaining the composition of the Housing Element Advisory Board because they had become so studious on this particular issue. But in light of the fact that the town already has a general plan committee, it was thought that the general plan committee already serves that community forum purpose. So that's why it's not a recommendation, because we have the general plan committee.
Okay. Does that make it clear, basically, it's in, the general plan committee is going to serve that function rather than?
Yeah, I understand that. It's just that I was hoping that, I guess we would, the general plan committee then would just remind, I mean, invite citizens to their meetings? Is that, I mean, I looked, I read this as a separate, as a separate community forums that would be held, you know, sporadically.
Yeah, and I think that was the intent of the individual who first brought that forward of, let's, let's continue a, a separate community group. But again, this town is fortunate in that we already have a committee of people who care about our general plan. And that essentially is a community forum. And we have a very extensive mailing list that has been following our housing element. And we would be happy to invite those individuals to join the, or to participate as appropriate with the general plan committee as it continues these issues.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kane? You didn't have anything to add?
That's how I read the paragraph, as, as Ms. Pravetti described. It was a good idea that's already being served by the GPC.
All right, any additional comments or Commissioner Hanson?
I know this won't address the, all the wonderful things that Commissioner Erickson said, but one of the reasons I asked to send the AHOS program back to the general plan committee was exactly for that reason. Because the, the entirety of the process of the Housing Element Board was from the get-go to satisfy state requirements. It was, there was a, in addition to the Reno, there was a couple of other things that we addressed early on. And, and then, and the decision of the Housing Element Board at that time was not to take, undertake a holistic review of, of looking at all the needs of housing and whether all, you know, every piece of the housing element addressed that. It was more to turn, address the state requirements at hand. There's at least a chance with the AHOS going back to the general plan committee that it could be looked at. Now, there won't be any carrot or stick to do so because if the housing element is certified by the HCD and by council before that, then there won't be any pressing need to do so. But I, my hope would be that the general plan committee would take it upon themselves to look at the general plan with the needs for housing, including seniors and affordability, and, and look at the AHOS and is that going to take us in the place that we want to go.
And I would just say that, given the current membership particularly of our planning commission on the general plan committee, that I'm, I'm confident that the group will look to the spirit of providing affordable housing as well as to the law. So I think we certainly can frame the discussion accordingly.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Well, I feel I just got schooled by Commissioner Erickson. He's got depth, he's got breadth, he's got a, a lot to say. And I'm, I'm wondering if the motion could be amended further to give him the option of submitting those concerns in, in an addendum. I'm not sure I understood everything he said, but it sounded important. And if, if we are recommending things to town council, I don't think his work should fall by the wayside because it's not in this right now. I'd like to see it summarized and submitted along with our recommendation.
It was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Pravetti, but when you first began speaking, the comment was that while we're going to make a recommendation, that everyone's comments, concerns, and thoughts would also be submitted to council. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if you want to strengthen what Commissioner Erickson had said, we could make that part of a motion in terms of the referral of AHOS back to GPC. So that way, it's framed within that context. That's the?
I would like that.
Commissioner Erickson?
I couldn't support the motion if it included that. Because my point being is that we were very focused on the fact that we were meeting the, the letter of the law. And we did that. And we missed the opportunity. So we should just own what we did. I'm not saying that's wrong. I, I'm happy to support that motion. But we missed that opportunity. And to try to suggest in the motion that we, we did all of this because we, I mean, I mean, I didn't go into, with the staff, while the report says that we met 40, in the present cycle, we met 41% of our housing demand, we met 13% of the categories of affordable housing. That's all we met. And we missed our goal. We had a shortfall of 328 units. If we do that again, we're going to have a shortfall of 365 units in affordable housing. And we did that when there were housing set-aside funds from the redevelopment agencies were no longer available. And we're basing a lot of what we're doing on below-market price housing fees. There's not going to be any funds to do it unless we figure out something else, unless we own that. So I don't want to water, I want the motion to stand as it is so it, so the record is clear of what action is being taken. And if the council feels like we're not, after the, in spirit of the law, and we're, and we're not going to make some, and we're not going to make the progress, which is pretty clear, I would suggest that will be harder for us to meet that 13% goal in this cycle. Because any measure of affordability index is worse today than it was before. And it's getting worse and worse and worse as we go forward. And we have less funds to do that. And we, we just took the easy out with the affordability. I'm not saying that, that's wrong. I'm just saying we did not address the underlying issue. We just checked the box and did the letter of the law.
So I believe it will not be added to the motion, but we will ensure that when staff gives the write-up from this evening, that those comments will be included.
It's okay not to include his comments, but I would like town council to watch the tape.
All right, do we have any additional comment or can we take a vote? All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Aye. It passes unanimously. There are no appeal rights, correct? We're now going to move on to the next agenda item. Architecture and site application S-14-080 through S-14-112. Requesting approval to demolish an existing building and parking lot and construct new site improvements and 33 single-family residents on property zoned 0PD. APN number 406-28039. May I have a show of hands from the commissioners who have all visited the site? Are there any disclosures of the commissioners at this time? Ms. Savage, I understand you're going to be giving us the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The town council approved a plan development in October 2014. The plan development required the architecture and site applications for the subject 33 single-family homes to be reviewed by the planning commission, which are before you tonight. The single-family residences are a variety of three plan types and range between 2,100 square feet and just over 2,200 square feet. They include attached garages between 440 square feet and 502 square feet. Each plan type has three elevation styles and materials vary between those different styles. The Tuscan-style elevations and the fence design do require further refinements and a condition of approval is included in your staff report exhibits to make sure that those revisions are made at the building permit stage. With your desk item tonight, the applicant did submit revisions to the Tuscan elevation and the fence designs, but staff believes that further refinement is still needed. The project complies with the plan development ordinance as conditioned and staff recommends approval. This concludes staff presentation and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Talasfor?
Thank you. Would you, would you walk us through what needs to be, you, the staff thinks more needs to be refined on this Tuscan home, is that right? Tuscan, Tuscan-style home?
That's correct.
Can you please walk us through that? And then I have another, a follow-up question.
Yes, if you first begin with Exhibit 9, which is the architectural consultant report received on March 23, 2015.
Yes? Thank you.
Page, it begins on page four. The recommendation is commenting on the use of the stone on Tuscan, the Tuscan-style elevations. And then on page five, the comments regarding the fences. Then if we go to the desk item, which contains Exhibit 12. For Plan 1, the elevations haven't, have not changed.
You're, you're referring Exhibit 13, correct?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Plan 2 elevations. You'll notice that there is an additional stone wall that's a half-stone wall. So it's the lower portion that's included on some side and/or rear elevations. That is the same case on Plan 3, where they have included some low-wall additional stone, which if you compare it to the full-face walls or the full walls with stone, it doesn't seem quite the intent that the Architectural Consultant recommended and in our professional opinion would need further refinement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions of staff?
Yeah.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Along those lines, the consulting, town consulting architect also spoke about when, the vinyl windows. And I wanted to know if that has been agreed to by the developer.
Was that in an earlier report from the Architectural Consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, it was, it was that there were, they were planning using vinyl windows instead of vinyl wood-clad windows. And the differences are, well, viewable, I guess, according to Mr. Cannon. So I just wanted to know, it's on page seven of June 20, 2014?
Thank you. And I do recall the applicant providing justification for that. And I will take a moment to find that for you.
That, and also the shutters, I think, were also in the same. He thought that there were two issues, that he thought they were issues and they should receive additional scrutiny?
Yes, and I do recall the staff speaking with the applicant as well regarding those. And the applicant does have justification for the vinyl shutters.
And he'll come, he'll be here?
If I could refer that question to the applicant, that'd be great.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And then are the material, is there a material board?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are two binders with materials and colors and all passes around for the Planning Commission to share.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Ms. Savage, on page two of the Consulting Arborist's report, it shows a total of 59 trees coming down and elsewhere. It talks about a number of trees being significantly impacted. Exactly how many trees will be replanted and how many, as far as you understand it right now, might be a candidate for pay-in lieu of?
So there are over 100 trees planned to be planted. And based on the requirements, after the proposed tree plant, replacement trees, there would still be 51 24-inch box trees, four 48-inch box trees, plus a number of replacement trees to be determined for a very large tree that would still need to be replaced with an in-lu fee.
And you're comfortable with that? That's, that sounds like a lot more trees going in than are coming out. I didn't, I didn't gather that from reading it initially. I was concerned about an excess use of pay-in lieu.
The town code requires replacement trees more than a one-to-one ratio. So replacement trees will certainly be much greater than the number of trees that are coming out. And it's based on the canopy size. So the larger the canopy size of the trees coming out, the more replacement trees are required.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Talasfor?
Also in the same letter, June 20, 2014, there was number three, which was the Planet 1 unit design. Do you have that in front of you? And I just was curious if...
Are you referring to the windows at the enclosed front porch?
Well, all of it. Was this addressed?
The applicant did address it to the best of their ability. And it does include the front porch, the stone on the curve of the garage, as well as the amount of garage that takes up the front facade.
Is that, is, can you refer to that in, in our plans?
Sure.
Would it be in our plans?
Yes, one moment, please.
Thank you.
So the first part of the recommendation on page six of the June 20 report is to provide in a photo of other homes that they had with a similar front facade. And I will put those on the overhead in just a moment. The other part of the recommendation was to open up the front entry porch. And if you go to Sheet A 1.0, it contains all three elevation, front elevations for Plan 1. And you'll see to the right of the front entry arch to the somewhat enclosed porch, there is a window and the applicant did attempt to increase the size of that to create a more front, open appearance. The third part of the recommendation was to eliminate the corners in the stone facing over the garage. And that was for, I believe, Elevation B. But all of the curved corners are removed from Plan 1 elevations.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions of staff? All right. All right, seeing none, we're now going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. However, I don't have a speaker card from the applicant. Are you the applicant? Are you going to speak this evening? So why don't you go ahead and come on up and speak? And then when you're finished, if you could please fill out the speaker card and give it to staff. You have five minutes to address us. When the light goes yellow, you have 30 seconds. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, it's Mark Chersini, formerly KT Properties, now referred to as KT Urban. I am the applicant of the project and I will fill out a speaker card for those of you that have not, I was going to say have the pleasure to meet me, but to be introduced to me in prior meetings. I have been working on this project for a couple of years now. And along with me this evening is the architect, the Dollin Group. Both Don Ruth Roth and Doug Cummings are here this evening, along with our civil engineer, Sue Dillon, and our landscape architect, Paul Reed, with Paul Reed and Associates. We also have Beverly Bryant along with me this evening. And Beverly handled our neighborhood outreach efforts that we made throughout the project. And so I'm going to keep my remarks short and leave it for those that have some questions for us with respect to the staff report and the comments that were made by Commissioner Talasfor this evening. I appreciate staff's work on this project. I want to give it an opportunity to thank staff for their diligent work on the project throughout its iterations, because there have been a number of iterations for the project, starting off way back when with a, with a affordable housing overlay zone project to Commissioner Erickson's comment, all the way to the project you have in front of you this evening. But it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort on staff, not only senior staff, but with Jennifer Savage's efforts of late to, to work with us on the comments. To address Commissioner Talasfor's comments with respect to the Consulting Architects' comments that you've seen, we're basing our responses now to the most current March date letter that we have from the Consulting Architect. Each time that we received a letter, and we have, I believe, three of them on the project, we took the opportunity to set up a meeting with the Consulting Architect and the design team so we could understand fully what his comments were for the project, whether or not it was the stone detailing, whether or not it was the fence detailing, whether or not it was the pitch of the roof or the, or the setbacks of the garage front door. So each time the Consulting Architect and our architect, Dollin Group, Don Ruth Roth, Doug Cummings, would address those comments, line item by line item. And what we've been able to do is refine the project now down to the most current letter that you have in front, which is now down to stone detail on the Tuscan elevation, of which we've since sent additional information to staff for their review. And I'm understanding this evening that staff is looking for us to do some additional refinements for that particular elevation and additional refinements for the fence detail. The fence detail, there was some question whether or not it was an unpainted fence. We're proposing a stain-grade fence material that we believe is complementary to the elevations of the home. But that's an effort that is, is done in joint cooperation between our landscape architect and our architect for the homes themselves. And they're interfacing each other and discussing what does that fence detail want to look like? And we've come up with a fence detail that we're very comfortable with, with a stain-grade material. But that could be another material, another type of fencing, if that's the desire of the commission here this evening. So I'm going to stop my comments at this juncture. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Sorry, questions? Commissioner Badami?
So you just addressed the fence issue, why you wanted to have it stained and not take up the additional comments provided by the town architect. But expanding on the stone exterior on the Tuscan-style homes, why wouldn't you follow that recommendation?
Well, I'd like Don Ruth Roth to, to address that. Don is the, the architect that is really looking at those refinements and exactly how best to address Mr. Cannon's comments, that his concerns on that elevation. I'd like, like Don to step up and address that directly, if I could.
Sure.
He's right behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Don Ruth Roth, Dollin Group Architecture Planning, Senior Associate, Senior Architect there. Nice to be before you again. I don't think we were saying that we won't address those comments. We're working through addressing those comments with staff and with Larry Cannon both. And I'm sure we'll come to a resolution that's amenable to everybody. I don't, I don't see a problem in finding a solution that, that fits what everybody's concerns are. I can't enumerate what that is tonight because I just found out they weren't happy with where we are. So I haven't sat and looked at what, you know, we can do now, but we'll figure something out. Well, I mean, we've just been, we've continued to add things to the building, thinking we're addressing the comments, and we just haven't quite gotten there yet.
So is the intent, you, you, was stated that you have been taking these letters and meeting with Mr. Cannon?
Absolutely.
So is the intent to have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Cannon to address these?
Absolutely, of course.
Okay.
That's how, that's how we get to resolution.
Great, good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hansen?
I'm not sure who I'm directing the question at, but I have a, just a general question about the target market for these 33 units. And then a follow-up question from that.
Appreciate the question, Commissioner. That is one that we are looking at is the, it's, it's going to be a combination of young workers, most likely tech workers. And also, we believe that we're going to see a fair amount of folks that are downsizing in the town of Los Cadas, or maybe potentially downsizing in other communities. For instance, I received a call from a, from a gentleman that is looking to sell his home in, in Saratoga. He and his wife have been in Saratoga for 40 years. He's anxious to know, when can I find out more about the homes? We would love to stay in the community and downsize. And I heard your comments early tonight with respect to even the ground floor for the seniors and master bedrooms. We've designed homes like that in the past. And what, what I believe is the homes that have been designed will be attractive to, to folks that are looking to downsize. But, so it's going to be a combination. We really look at it as young families and, and older families as well.
Okay, well, then maybe you can help me because I read through all the plans. I mean, I poured over them and it looked like there was an option in some of the units to put the fourth bedroom on the first floor if you chose to do so. But none, not, I didn't see in any of the 33 units, a specified bedroom on the first floor. So then I can't imagine why somebody downsizing would want to buy a house like that. I mean, maybe I'm missing something.
Right, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm, I'm, what I'm telling you, it's what, what has taken place in the marketplace. And that wasn't, wasn't the only call I've, I've received. So there, there will be those that will go there, whether or not they appreciate the, the style of home that we have offered for that is, is there a discretion, obviously?
So I guess that's a concern that I have with this whole development is that there isn't any specified thing to really address the, you know, the downsizing market from older individuals by having the, you know, a specified bedroom on the first floor. So that's one question I have. My second question, I, I, I come from a background in the town of doing a lot of work with bike and pedestrian stuff. And I saw lots of pretty drawings, but I didn't see a plan for the sidewalks and how bicycles would be handled in the neighborhood. It wasn't clear to me on the drawings where the sidewalks would be and when people are driving through the neighborhood, you know, you know, how would they be mixed with car traffic and that kind of thing? So I, that, that's definitely something I would like to see more of before I could really feel comfortable. And especially also the bikes as well. Because if families were to buy in there, and even young professionals, we're hoping that more of them are going to be riding their bikes. And how is that going to work inside this neighborhood? And you kind of, I know the surrounding area is really busy in terms of traffic, but I think you got to start with the development itself and have places, you know, that are safe for bikes and pedestrians. And then on top of that, I am curious also about the common areas. I saw some pictures of the common area, but I didn't, couldn't map them to where they were in the overall development. Because it seemed to me like a development like this with 33 units is the ideal thing for something like, you know, complete streets with nice sitting areas for people and park benches and things like that. And I think that was the intent here, but there wasn't enough detail for me to evaluate whether it got there or not.
Sure, I appreciate that. And I can bring Paul Reed up to the microphone if we need to with respect to the landscape. And I'll start with the landscapes and Seth, where you finished. We have a combination of an, an area for, for seating and a trellis area and a lawn area for, for children to play, in addition to a separate community garden. And we were very pleased with our thought process on introducing of a, a community garden from the standpoint that you really see the, the desire for, for young folks, especially the farmer's market here in town and other farmer's markets, the popularity of those. And with the homeowners association, it's, it's nice to be able to have that, to be able to be maintained and something that can be, the eyes kept on that particular element of the project for the longevity of the, of the project. For the bicycling and the kid and children play, you'll notice that we've introduced some decorative pavement throughout the, the project. And the term that we originally started off was a worn earth design. And basically that is really for the, the smaller streets and for the area flow, we're not looking at the, the traffic patterns come here. This is a, this is a neighborhood that, where people will know their neighbors, know where there's children to be played. This is not a, a drive-through neighborhood. So we're looking at the combination of the, the walkways that we do have. And in addition to, the kids will actually ride on the street. They'll ride in the street, along the edge of the street, obviously, but it's going to be a combination. And I'll give you a good example. When I was taking some photographs of other projects that have been completed here in the town of Los Cadas, and one that has been very well-received with the Villa Felice project, beautifully done. And when I'm out and I'm, and I'm parking in a little parking stall and I'm walking down in front of these homes, taking pictures of the elevations, what do I see in the street? I see three boys riding their bikes, you know, encircling around me, encircling, going around. And there, it's very quiet. There's not much car traffic coming in and out because it's not a thorough, fair street. But I took a picture... But I took a picture of that because it, this reminded me that that's the type of living that we're looking for. That's the type of living I grew up with, you know, that we actually did play basketball in the street, or we rode our bikes in the street. We're not all riding on the sidewalks. Today, just today, when I'm driving in Cupertino, I'm coming on over here, I see a sign that says, you know, no riding the bike, walk the bike on the sidewalk. So that's what you'll do, walk the bike on the sidewalk, get on the street and go out and diverse out.
Well, and that sounds great. So I think you're, what you're saying from the vision sounds really good, but I just didn't see it in the drawings. For example, one of the open space areas, there was pictures of parked cars in it. And I don't think of, I couldn't imagine an open space that I would consider a public meeting area that would have parked cars in it. So maybe it's just the drawings that we have, but I don't feel like I can properly evaluate this from that perspective with that, with the drawings that we got.
Okay.
So I'm sure, I'm just not seeing it, and it's, it's there because I'm hearing it from your intent.
All right.
Commissioner Badami?
Your descriptive is about the children riding their bicycles in the street is perhaps some of us did when we were growing up. This is a major thoroughfare to the hospital. So as a parent, I'd be very concerned about that, having my kids ride their bikes on that road with ambulances going by, et cetera. But I was going to ask a question about the boulder that you had in your previous exhibit when the plan development was approved. And I think we had some concerns about children climbing on that boulder. So with respect to Commissioner Hanson asking about the play areas for the children, was the boulders going to be retained?
No, we're not showing the boulder.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talusfor?
Thank you. I'm going to have to do a follow-up with your visit to Bella Vista. And I don't like to usually bring personal experience into this, but I happen to live on that street. So I'd like to address what you just said. And yes, the children ride their bikes on the street. And if you're me, you go 15 miles an hour down that street because you know that. However, if you are teenagers who don't live there, if you are other people in the, in other words, we can't control how fast people go. It is a situation, it's an issue, actually. And we have sidewalks. So I'm, I really have a hard time with your explanation. It's, it's, it makes me really uncomfortable. And you're not taking into account the delivery trucks that have no idea about children in the street. So I would just like to tell you that. Anyway, that's, and I'm sorry to have to follow up with that, but it's, it's uncomfortable. But I did have a question for the architect to follow up. May I do that?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I wanted to know if you could address the windows and the shutters that Mr. Cannon also brought up?
We, we've resolved the windows with Mr. Cannon. We are providing, they are vinyl windows with two grids on them, so they replicate a wood window, and they have the same profile. And then the shutters, we're still working through that detail with them. We are still, we've just made a proposal, we have, it's one of the few outstanding items that we're still trying to resolve.
Okay. And I'm not sure if you can answer this question, but I'm quite curious about it. There's 33 homes in this development, and yet you chose three plans only. And I'm quite surprised that, I was actually shocked that I didn't see maybe four or five of a development this size. Can you explain that?
Part of it is geometry. There's a, there's a certain efficiency to the site, and there's a certain number of ways you can solve a floor plan. These are small floor plans. That limits our number of resolutions that are really good. There's a lot of okay resolutions, and then there are several good resolutions. So we picked what we felt were the best resolutions to the size of footprint that we had available.
And I just have one more, and I'm sorry.
And then Commissioner Kane?
Yes. I wanted to address the garage doors. In some of your plans, the garage doors are about 50% of the facade of your house, houses. And in the design, our residential design guidelines, we often look for a softening of those features so that they're not so, something that wouldn't make them so prominent as they, as you face them. Have you thought about doing that? Have you checked our design guidelines?
We actually did that. We, by recessing them further than we would normally, they're deeply recessed, about two and a half feet, which is way further than we would normally. They're not right on the face of the building, so you get a nice shadow line. It brings the actual architecture of the building down in front of the door. And then brought the entry element to the front so that it shares that front facade and is not pushed back to soften that impact. And it is really only one house that has that. The other house has the garage in the back, and the other garage, the other one is less than 50%. So we, we chose to resolve it once at one house that way, and then the other to better meet the guidelines overall.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
And just to Commissioner Hanson, Plan Three does have a standard bedroom and bath downstairs on the first floor.
It was the fourth bedroom. It wasn't the master.
Okay. Well, you had said bedroom, and I...
No, so I did see that.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Thank you. Yeah. No, but I was looking for the master, so.
Commissioner Kane?
Forgive me for not getting your name. I'm Michael Kane.
First name is Mark. The last name's Terzini. T-E-R-S-I-N-I.
Your name is the one on the signs that are posted on the property?
Should, should be. I'm usually the guy that they look for.
Asking people to come to the April 23rd, 2014 meeting?
Is that sign still leaning up against the building? Is that what you're saying?
We should update that, Pocky.
Okay.
I have a concern I didn't have 30 minutes ago. Twice you've made reference to young people as your market, and tech people, and young people, and, and then I hear Commissioner Hanson saying, do we have any master bedrooms You wouldn't be excluding seniors from the project in any way, would you?
No.
The A and S question we have in front of us is a very narrow corridor. Is it too late to request consideration of master bedrooms on the first floor?
That's not a requirement in any of the current documents the town has. I know as we talked through the housing element, that was one of the items that Ms. Hanson wants to have addressed, and the rest of the commission as well, and that part of that recommendation. There's no requirement for any number of bedrooms, whether it's master or otherwise, to be on the ground floor.
Would you consider putting any master bedrooms on the ground floor?
Well, at, at this juncture, we would consider that as far as if we were to receive information from the buying public that in order for them to buy the unit, they would like to see a master bedroom on the ground floor. That would be the time that we'd make a modification of the plan, but we wouldn't make the modification at this time.
I would value that diversity if you could get it in there. I know the corridor on A and S is very narrow, so that you would consider it as probably the best I can get at this juncture. You also mentioned outreach, that you had a person who conducted your outreach. And I'd like to know how many neighbors were talked to and what that feedback was?
Sure. I'd happy to bring Beverly Bryant up as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kane. My name is Beverly Bryant. I'm actually a resident of Los Gatos. I'm working for KT Urban on this particular project. And my commission was to talk about public outreach. We had a great deal of public outreach that took over, golly, a couple of years, actually. We reached as many, and I had a chart, I did not bring it with me tonight, but we reached as many as 467 people. We did outreach through public meetings, meeting, excuse me, of immediate neighborhood, neighbors. We invited people at 300-foot range, at 500-foot range, over a course of two of them, one in October 12 and one in February, no, sorry, October 13 and February 14, 19, 2014. We did, I personally walked the neighborhood, you know, and handing out flyers and talked to people, made a great number. We mailed notices to 125 in the first instance, 175 people in the second instance. Some of the other statistics is we talked to, and wrote letters to the business neighbors who are across the street. As you know, this project is right across from the Dell Avenue Business Park, part of which is in Los Gatos. It's called Agato Business Park. We sat down and talked to them. We talked to virtually all of the people in the shopping center. There's what, where Aldo's Restaurant is, there are a number of businesses there. We had coffees with them and meetings with them. We went into the condos, the senior condos that are on Par Avenue and talked to people a couple of different times. Many of them came to our public meetings that we had at the Nordal Hall, which is right in that area. And we, I cannot tell you how many of the phone calls, and I made personal phone calls to talk to people about the project, answering them, writing letters to them and notes and so on. At the two public hearings that were held, the planning commission hearing and the council hearing, we had, I think, a number of people upwards of 25 who came and spoke in favor of the project. There's one neighbor here today, I think she's still here, there she is, who came out tonight. And there was another gentleman in the, in the desk item, as you saw, that came out twice. So we really felt that we talked to people. One man wanted to know about the site. We walked it with him. We brought a traffic engineer and a tree, not a tree engineer, but we talked about, you know, the site with him. And two or three of times, we met with neighbors.
Well, it sounds like an outstanding job. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We really, just to, just to wrap it up, we understand how, as a resident of the town, and I've been here for almost 30 years, I understand the importance of communicating your plans and doing what you say you're going to do. And I think that's what this project is all about. Thank you for asking the question.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right. Yeah, no, I know. So we're now going to invite comments from members of the public. I have three speaker cards. When you come up, please make sure that you pull the microphone to, you state your name clearly. You'll have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you're down to 30 seconds. The first is Suzette Austin.
Good evening. My name is Suzette Austin. 19 years ago, I moved from Los Gatos into a home in a development built by KT Properties, now KT Urban. It is off of Capri Avenue, less than a mile from the proposed Knoll's Drive site. My house is a quality house. All aspects met or exceeded what was promised to us, and it's a home I'm proud of today. I'd like to also mention that in our master bedroom, we had it modified, so basically the plan showed two bedrooms, and we had it all made into one bedroom. And that was no problem at all. This is a quality project. I think that almost anything would be better than the abandoned building and the chain-link fence that's there now. I strongly recommend that you once again give final approval to this project. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Actually, I do. Just to, as we've had some discussion on modifying for a bedroom or whatever, at what point were, did you make the modification? As you chose the home prior to the design of it? Or were you in the home and then had the modification made?
No. It was, actually, the house had fallen out of escrow, and then my husband and I bought it, and it was still being constructed. So even though they had started construction on it and framed out the room, they took one of the walls out of it and added a closet in it for us. So that instead of having a master bedroom and a fifth bedroom, we have four bedrooms and a very large master bedroom.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Lee Quintana?
I had not planned on speaking tonight on this item, so I'm maybe not going to be so fluid. I would just like to comment on a couple of things. In our zoning code, the PD zoning indicates that there should be excellence in design. This already has an approved site design, and you're here for the A and S, which includes architecture. And I am not an architect, but looking at these plans, to me, they're very flat, they're very boring. And that's just my opinion as a layperson. When it comes to the issue of move-down housing, which was mentioned, I am a senior. I live in a two-story house. I would never buy another two-story house as a move-down for a senior. And in fact, these houses are larger than my home, so they couldn't be a move-down anyway. So those are just two things. And I guess I also want to make the comment that I've always assumed that even if you've approved the PD zoning, you do have a little bit of flexibility at architecture and site in terms of the architecture, as long as you're not conflicting with the PD. And I don't see that what was being suggested or asked in terms of bedroom, master bedroom on the first floor for at least some units, would be in conflict with, with the PD. It just isn't specifically stated in the PD itself. But it would be the same, the saying, well, the PD didn't say that you could make one bedroom out of two, but it wouldn't violate a PD to do that.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Kane?
I agree with, with much of what you said. I wasn't on commission first time this got, went through. I've looked at the plans and I've walked the subject property, and I think the intensity is overwhelming.
I would agree with you.
And I know that you've been, you were a planning commissioner for a long, long time. But let's get that out on the table, that I don't see any way that that can be addressed tonight, given what's in front of us. We have a simple A and S, and the intensity and the density and the everything else has been covered by the PD, which process needs improvement, which process we hope they're working on improving as we speak. But what can I do about that tonight?
Again, my philosophy when I was a commissioner, as you said, was that if there is nothing you can do about an A and S application as it comes before you, why is it coming before you? It makes it non-discretionary. It makes it simply a permit that you're approving. And I don't think that's the intent of an A and S.
Thank you.
But that's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Jeff Lockridge?
Hi, my name is Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paceolora. I'm also, well, I'm a 37-year resident of Los Gatos, and I'm quite familiar with that area because my brother-in-law lives at Villa Visona, which is just directly behind this development. And it's, it's Section 8, and behind, and beside him is, on Par Avenue, both of these are on Par Avenue, is the open door facility, which is also HUD housing. And I have to say that, in my opinion, and I'm not an architect, I don't think, well, I think that the, the open door look and feel is 100 times better than this, and it's HUD housing. And this, to me, looks like if this isn't affordable housing, it should be, because it doesn't, it doesn't have any, what I would consider articulation in the housing. It's just a big, they look like Monopoly houses or hotels. And I don't know what can be done about it tonight, but I see, you know, just looking through the documentation, seeing them slap on some, some shutters, is like, oh, okay, I guess I could have done that, too. So, and also, the entry doors, I looked at some of the elevations. I had a hard time finding which elevation had the entry door. Maybe that... Maybe that was just me, but that's what I saw. And I would also say that the outreach having to do with 300 and 500 feet away from the area, that includes Section 8 and HUD housing, so a lot of the residents that are close in on that are Section 8 or HUD housing residents, so.
Commissioner Kane?
What's the significance of that?
Well, most of the time, well, if you have been involved with Villa Visona and the residents, half of them are Russian, the other half of them are a mix between, these are non-English speaking, most of them are non-English speaking people. So, they live in housing that is government subsidized, and they're going to be asked questions about whether the development behind them is appropriate, or they like it or not. I mean, I've spoken to many of the residents there, and I don't know what information you could get from them, having to do with a new development behind them, and it's going to take away their parking lot, in fact, for a lot of them that park there.
The lady said she talked to 467 people. You feel the viability of that may be in question?
I think that 467 is quite a bit, and I don't know that the, there was a consensus of all those people. I mean, talking to a lot of people is one thing, but what's the consensus back? What did people say? I know a lot of people were against that, and they fought against it until at the town council meeting when it got passed, it got passed in kind of a strange way, but anyway, it got passed, and then those people stopped fighting because it was just a done deal. But there were a lot of people against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards for this item, so we're going to provide the applicant up to three minutes to respond to the comments and questions that were just put out.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Sorry for my voice, been a long afternoon. Unfortunately, sometimes I don't think the commission has the benefit of some of the colored renderings that we are able to produce, and when, sometimes when it gets distilled down to the packages, when I see the package that comes out with the staff report, and it's not any criticism at all of staff, it's just, it's just the nature of the beast. It's when you take drawings that have been produced, professionally produced, and then you distill them down and keep reducing them and copying, they don't quite have the same effect. But I wanted to touch on the architecture. And the architect, the Dahlin Group, was selected specifically for their expertise in design, in quality design. This is not just a startup firm that's first whack at trying to do projects. They do projects in, all the way from extremely high-end custom homes to multifamily housing, to apartments, to senior housing, and we work together. This is not just hire them and then just go forward and say, just put anything out. When it comes down to the unit mix, and there's a question with respect to the unit mix, we talk about that a lot. We talk about the elevations and the variety of the units, and the mixing of the roof tiles, from barrel tile to flat tile to the colors, because as you work through and design a project, we're very proud of the projects that we build, and we will be watching this project throughout its completion, and very interested in the end result of the project. You know, who's buying the project, how well-received was the project, and we look at a lot of different product that the Dahlin Group has put out before we even decided on going forward with this particular design concept. So, I'm just saying that we're very, very pleased with the architecture, we're very pleased with the landscape architecture. Paul Reed does marvelous work for us over the years, many years, and has done, again, high-end custom homes to small lot, single-family homes. So, we pay a lot of attention to that. Our civil engineer has been in this valley for, I want to say, 60 years doing civil engineering works, we're very comfortable with him. So, I'm very pleased with this project, and I look for a favorable recommendation this evening, so we can move forward on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions for the applicant? You're pausing, so that's why I'm not saying no, because... Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if any of the commissioners have questions of staff, want to comment on the application, or would like to introduce a motion. Commissioner Erickson?
So, the matter before us is on Architecture and Site Applications S-14080 and S-14112. There are required findings that we are required to make to support a recommendation to approve those architectural site applications, and that's the matter before us tonight. It's not whether or not the town council approved an appropriate plan development, that's history now. So, I'm pleased to make a motion to approve architectural site applications S-14080 through S-14112, and I can make the required finding for CEQA, that environmental impact report was prepared for the plan development, and it was certified by the town council on September 16th, 2014, and no further environmental analysis is required for the proposed architectural site applications. I can also make the required finding for the demolition of an existing structure as required by Section 2910-0950E of the Town Code, as outlined in Exhibit 2. I can make the required compliance, the required finding that the architectural site applications are in compliance with the Plan Development Ordinance as adopted by the town council. I can make the required finding that the architectural site applications as proposed are in compliance with the residential design guidelines, and that all the required considerations have been made in review of an architectural site application, and noting that as a part of it, one is adopting the conditions of approval in Exhibit 3, and that the consulting architect of the town has in fact reviewed the proposal and has said it is in compliance from his, in his judgment, with all of the guidelines for a PD and for architectural site application, with the two exceptions that are covered by Condition of Approval 21, and I'm comfortable that the staff can facilitate the working of the applicant and his architect with the town's consulting architect to resolve that issue.
All right, do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? Nobody has yet, so I was... We don't? Commissioner Kane?
Do we have a second to the motion?
No, we do not. So, if we do not, then...
Well, I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion because we're a judicial body. We can't rewrite laws, we're not authorized to change Town Code. Commissioner Erickson is regrettably correct. We are in a narrow corridor, I don't have an attractive choice, there's no reason to beat this to death, but I'm willing to listen to opposing opinions, I just can't find them to... None of these houses have backyards, and I saw it for the first time when the plans were, and I was, what is up with that? But it's too late. What we need is examination of our PD process, and Commissioner Erickson, I believe, is correct.
Any additional comment? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yes, I will not be supporting this motion. Actually, I don't find that Mr. Cannon did support this 100%, and that's really what I was looking for, especially in a development with this dense of building. He asked in his June 20th letter, and I think this is really important, because I was very disappointed to see that this was not happening, but what I'm concerned about in such a dense and compact community that is being developed here, is that the massing is out of human scale almost. And in Los Gatos, besides the rich architectural details that we look for, and the models are, the three models that are relatively new, Bella Vista, Laurel Muse, and Bluebird, compact but rich in detail, but what's missing, as he asked here for, he gave the option to the, to the firm of requesting a greater variation in A, B, and C elevation, massing, and articulation. And basically, what's been happened here is that we have flat fronts and things added to the front, which doesn't really help the massing at all. So, that's one reason that I won't be supporting it, because I don't believe that all of the suggestions that Mr. Cannon had articulated with you have been addressed. And also, I wouldn't approve this without seeing a final design, and you're still working through issues. And I'm not going to approve something I can't see.
Commissioner Badami?
That was my concern as well, that it's come before us, this should be the final product that we're deciding on, and I'm not comfortable that it will be worked on, because it should have been worked on at this point before it came before us. So, I won't be supporting the motion. I don't see that it's compliant with the residential design guidelines, and I'm referring to Exhibit 9, Section 3.2.2, and I, too, don't see the excellence in design.
Do we have any other comments? All right, I guess we'll take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Two in favor, four opposed. Mr. Paulson, are there any appeal rights?
There's not appeal rights, you need to have another motion. Does that motion fail?
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
Not prepared to, but I will. I will, and I'm not sure where to go with this. I would make a motion for Architecture and Site Application S-14-080 through S-14-112 for 375 Knoll's Drive, to continue the application in that, that the unfinished architectural features discussed with town consulting architect be worked through and presented as a whole package when you do come back. That you pay attention to the massing and see what you can do with that, because I find that this is, there's such a commonality that we need to address that, and that is what architecture and site review is here. And I think that would be it.
All right, you have a second? Commissioner Badami?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Oh, comment?
If it's going to be continued and the applicant's going to come back, I don't know whose responsibility it is to review this, but I'm not satisfied that we have seen adequate description of what the bike and pedestrian accommodations are going to be for the community, as opposed to the actual buildings themselves. So, for me to want to have this continued, I want, and for me to be able to support it in the future, I'd need to be able to see what the detailed plan is for that. So, if the maker of the motion would be willing to add that to the requirements for the continuance.
Yes, I'm glad you reminded me, I will.
And I apologize, I asked for a vote before, we had a date also, so we need a date certain. I will go along with that. I was just going to put all in one and say to you. Yeah, because April 22nd, it'd be May 13th?
May 13th is a possibility, or May 22nd?
Oh, it might.
Or 27th, sorry, not 22nd.
I think we're going to kind of, in general, look out and see if anyone gives any indication that they would be ready by the 13th. Okay. So, I think we'll set it for May 13th, and we'll include that in our motion as our date certain. Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion and the senator?
Yes, please include the date certain.
Thank you. All right.
I'm in agreement.
Before I take a vote too early, do we have any additional comments? All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes 4 to 2. Before we move to the next item, we're going to take a five-minute quick break, if you all don't mind, and we'll be right back. We are now going to consider the next agenda item, which is an Architecture and Site Application S-14-076, Conditional Use Permit Application U-14-023, and Variance Application V-14-002, Requesting Approval to Demolish an Existing Single Family Home and Construct a New Single Family Home With Reduced Setbacks on Property Zone CH, APN Number 523-06-031. May I have a show of hands of all the commissioners that have visited the site? Are there any disclosures at this time? No? Ms. Mosley, I understand you're going to be giving us a staff report.
I am, good evening. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing non-conforming residence at 16785 Magnuson Loop, and to construct a new single-family residence in substantially the same location. The property is zone CH, which makes the existing residence non-conforming, or the residential use non-conforming. The existing site contains a 1,362 square-foot, single-story residence, which was constructed in 1947, as well as a detached garage. The proposed new residence would be 382 square feet larger than the existing residence in order to accommodate a fourth bedroom. The existing garage would be retained. The proposed residence, while having a larger, yet still conforming FAR, would be similar in size and massing to those in the immediate neighborhood. Due to the condition of the residence and the substantial termite damage, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing residence rather than do an addition remodel as previously considered by the applicant. As a result, the applicant is requesting a variance in order to retain the existing non-conforming front and side along a street setbacks. It is staff's opinion that the applicant has provided the required justification to assist the commission in granting the variance application as required by Town Code. In conclusion, while the site is zone CH, the property has contained a residence since 1947. Any addition to the existing residence would require approval of a conditional use permit for the non-conforming use. This conforms to Town Code and the general plan through retention of the existing housing stock. The requested variance would permit the applicant to rebuild the non-conforming setbacks with the new residence, and would be appropriate, given the size, location, and zone of the lot, and that in contrast, conforming setbacks along the busy street corner would substantially decrease the available private open space, which other properties in the vicinity enjoy. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the applications, subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's report, we are here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. My question is about the applicant claim that the, that the house was infested with termites. Do you, do you get involved in that, as far as checking out that, following up to see if that's the reason that a remodel wasn't?
So, each application to demolish a single-family residence is required to submit a structural condition report to either verify that information or provide that documentation. The applicant did provide that. It doesn't say that the, that it is infested with termites, but it does document that there is, there is a report that documents- that documents substantial termite damage that has been abated. The termites are no longer there, but the damage that they left previously in the past is what they're concerned about. A lot of times, it doesn't do us any good to, when they know that there is a history of termite damage, for them to assume that they can go with an addition remodel, go through the process, and then, when they open up the walls, discover that there is above and beyond the damage that they had anticipated. So it is often encouraged when they know that there is more damage or the potential that there is substantial damage to kind of account for that, and that is what this applicant is trying to do through this application process.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I apologize, this might be, you know, because I'm relatively new to the commission, but if I read the staff report correctly, if this property was actually zoned as for what it was, which is R18, it wouldn't have a compliance issue. Is that correct?
The town code allows us to look at allowing exceptions to the requirements of the zone on non-conforming lots, which this would be if it were zoned R18, which is what the adjacent residential lots are zoned. So we could look at providing a compatible, non-conforming setback through just the architecture and site, not requiring a variance application.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess the question that was kind of burning in my mind was, why aren't we trying, why aren't we fixing the zoning? Because this isn't ever not going to be a residence, and it seemed like it would be a smoother process if they ever want to do anything again. I mean, or is, should I just not be bringing that up?
Well, it is one avenue that could have been considered. It is not necessarily easier, and it is more lengthy. I'd have to look at the costs. The rezoning is definitely more costly, I think, than the applications that they pursued.
Commissioner Kane?
Ms. Mosley, in your discussion of variance, you included town code Section 292165, which speaks directly to allowing consideration, given the result that, without it, the result would be undue hardship. I found that persuasive. It's right in the town code. And yet, in your recommendations, you didn't make a reference to 165. You made a reference to 170. Can you educate me as to why you left out 165 in the recommendations?
The findings that you're required to make are specifically those located in 170, but I included 165 because it related to helping you get to the findings, and I felt that it provided background. But the specific findings that you need to make are 170.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question, just to make sure that I'm clear, and we're all looking at the drawings the same. If you were to look at drawing A1, talking about the variance and stuff, I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. If you look on the bottom left, we have the outline of the existing house and the outline of the proposed new house. Aside from the fact that it looks like they're squaring out the back, they are still following, falling within the same footprint, or I guess setbacks, as what they originally had, because the garage is staying. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not asking for any variance beyond what the house is existing sitting on?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Real quick. A real quick question is Larry Cannon made several suggestions for this, and in the staff report, it says that, of which, detailed of which the applicant has addressed in the proposed development plans. What do you mean by addressed?
So they've made those corrections that the consulting architect requested regarding beefing up the details, particularly the front porch elements and such.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Mosley. All right, we're now going to open the public portion and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission for up to five minutes. Josephine Chang. Please make sure you adjust the microphone so you can speak directly into it and state your name for the record.
Sorry, I have a cold. My name is Josephine Chang. I'm the applicant. I grew up in Los Gatos since the age of three. My parents still live in Los Gatos. My family lives in Cambrian Park right now, and we would like to move to Los Gatos and reside in this home. We have two kids, so we would like to have a four-bedroom house. And due to the constraints of the lot, there's no place for a backyard, seeing that's on Los Gatos Boulevard and adjacent to Taco Bell. So we figured the best way to have a yard is to maintain the courtyard between the garage and the house, and to make it more accessible from the house by having the great room face that courtyard, which, if you look at the existing floor plan, the communal living space faces Los Gatos Boulevard. So we did consider remodeling the house, but if you look, there's a termite report in 2007 stating there's extensive damage to floor joists and ceiling joists and roof rafters, et cetera, that we didn't find it practical to maintain. Because we wanted to do so much floor plan changes that we would have to essentially rebuild all the walls, and we wanted to at least have nine-foot ceilings, because my husband's 6'5". And so for, we always say it's like me having seven-foot ceilings if it's eight-foot ceilings. So we would like to raise the ceilings, which would re-roof the entire house, so we figured, well, we might as well just rebuild it than trying to redo the entire house. And so here we are. So, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to have any questions of the applicant? No? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're now going to invite speakers from the public. I have one card for Lee Quintana, please.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. Happy to talk to you again. I want to start off by saying I have no problem with the project itself, the ANS application. My issues are with the process, and I think Commissioner Hanson alluded to part of the problems that I have with the process. This particular piece of property has a general plan designation of low-density residential. It has a zoning designation of highway commercial. The use that has existed on the site for almost 70 years, and that will continue to exist on the site, has always been residential, so that the use and our general plan map designation are consistent, and the goals and policies of the general plan are consistent with the residential land use. However, the zoning is not consistent with the land use, and both by town regulations and state law, the zoning has to be consistent with the general plan. So the way I look at it is you have to change the zoning, or you have to change the general plan. The general plan, land use, is what the town has determined as the long-term goal of this particular piece of land, and it's been in that use for quite a long time. If you change the zoning to R1, you no longer have an issue with having to have a CUP. You no longer have an issue of having to request a variance. It is a much cleaner process, and it's also consistent with state law. In addition, in the past, this type of, to use a CUP, I'll give an example, right across the street on Magnuson Loop and Los Gatos Boulevard, there is a mixed-use office building that has office below, residential above. And zoning and the general plan are consistent with the office use. A CUP, I assume, was used to approve the residential use, which is not a permitted use under the office zoning, but it is with a CUP. The CUP was used not to replace the existing use, but to add a use different than those that are permitted by right. I hope that wasn't too confusing.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Kane?
Hang on, Ms. Quintana. I want to ask staff a question. So earlier, the question was asked, why didn't we rezone it? And the response was, the expense was seemingly, the extra expense was seemingly unnecessary. Now, what I'm hearing now is that it can be viewed as being necessary, and if, in fact, that was the case, then I want to know what the additional expense would be. Do you have any estimate on that process?
We can get the additional expense shortly, while you're deliberating, but it also requires going through the town council, so it's that added expense as well. There are currently two avenues in the town code to allow what the applicant is requesting. The one is the current process they're going through. The other would be, as Ms. Quintana said, to go through the CUP, or to go through the rezoning process. Currently, the town code allows a conditional use permit for residential uses in many of our commercial zones. That is one of the items that the Plan Development Committee is going to be addressing, to try to take care of that and at least discuss that issue, and see if there are opportunities to modify either code and/or general plan language to make those situations different, to probably get closer to the mixed-use scenario Ms. Quintana raised across the street on Magnuson Loop. I will, and maybe Ms. Mosley is grabbing the sheet now, so she will get that monetary difference, but it's also the added additional town council requirement.
I don't think the case before us is that complicated, but Ms. Quintana is, it sounds like she's saying that Plan A is inappropriate, and that Plan B is not only, makes more sense, but is the only appropriate avenue. In this case, could we, in fact, if we chose to, go with Plan A and avoid the additional expense?
The current, Plan A being in the current proposal? Yes.
Then I don't have a question.
That's too bad, because I have an answer.
All right. Any further questions? No? Thank you. Typically, at this point, we give the applicant an additional three minutes to speak. If there were any questions or issues brought up, would you like an additional three minutes? Okay. Thank you.
I wasn't aware of the option to rezone, but obviously, added expense, not desirable. Added time to go to town council, also not that desirable for us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? All right, we're now going to, what?
I just guess we, I would just hope that in the future, we do it differently. Commissioner Hanson brings up the point, why didn't we just rezone it, get it done once, instead of incurring the additional expense? That's my other comment. Ms. Prevetti?
I just wanted to reiterate what Mr. Paulson said. The speaker, Ms. Quintana, raised an important point, and the council agreed when they set up the Plan Development Study Committee to add the whole notion of conditional use permits and the way the town has historically used them, appropriately per our existing town code. But it is entirely possible that through that study committee, there may be recommendations for town code amendments that would provide clarity on this. So there is a larger opportunity for a community discussion on this point through the study committee process, but tonight, before you, you have an applicant who's abiding by one of two paths that are available legally under our town code, and so that choice has already been, that path has already been chosen, and so that's the item that is before you.
All right. I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing now and ask if any commissioners have any comments, questions of staff, or a motion. Commissioner Kane was very fast.
I have a comment to staff. I walked the property, and on the north side of the property is the fast-food restaurant. It would be a shame if the applicant built a lovely new home and that fence fell down on them, because it's in very sad condition. It's an eyesore, and I'll stick with the potential liability of it falling down, if nothing else, to get that thing repaired and make it less of an eyesore. It runs, it runs the length of the commercial property from east to west, and then hooks north, and the whole thing looks like it's ready to come down. The lattice, the wooden lattice above it, has come down in portions, and the whole thing is leaning and bent. So I don't think I can make that part of this condition, but the applicant should tell them to make it part of it, get that fence fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Commissioner Badami?
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve Architecture and Site Application S-14-076, Conditional Use Permit Application U-14-023, and Variance Application V-14-002, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence with reduced setbacks on property zone CH. I can make the required findings for sequo. I can also make the required findings for demolition, due to the current condition, due to the substantial termite damage. I can make the required findings for a conditional use permit. We're retaining an existing housing unit. I can also make the required findings for approval of a variance application. We're retaining the existing setbacks that have been there for years, and I find that it's in compliance with the residential design guidelines.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson? Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there any appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right. Thank you. All right, we will now consider Agenda Item 5, Conditional Use Permit Number U-14-025, requesting approval to modify an existing CUP for Holt's Restaurant to construct and operate an outdoor dining patio with full liquor service on property zoned C-2, APN number 52904-083. Can I have a show of the hands of the commissioners that have visited the property? Are any disclaimers from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Kane?
I've discussed this matter with town council, that town attorney, and others. I consider Mr. Holt to be a good friend. We spent a lot of time together. We served on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, of which he is now president, and wondered if I should reveal the relationship or recuse myself, and the response I've received consistently from all sources was that I should reveal the relationship and do my job, which I intend to do. In fact, I intend to give him a hard time on a couple of points.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane. Ms. Mosley, I understand you're going to give us the staff report again.
I am. Thank you. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of University Avenue in Los Gatos, Saratoga Road. The existing tenant, Holtz, has occupied the space since 2013. Prior occupants have been hobies in Baker Square. The applicant is requesting to modify their CUP to permit dining with full, to permit an outdoor dining patio with full liquor service that will be proposed along Los Gatos-Saratoga Road frontage, and to increase the permitted seating from 114 to 158 seats. In 2014, the applicant applied for a modification of their CUP in order to modify the permitted alcohol service from beer and wine to full liquor. At the same time, the applicant proposed a reduction in operating hours and a modification to the dining classification from high turnover sit-down to a quality restaurant. The town council approved the applicant's requests in April of 2014. The applicant is proposing to install a new four-foot masonry wall at the edge of the proposed patio to provide the required delineation, as well as provide screening and protection from the busy street. The wall will reduce in height to three feet as it nears the corner to provide a clear line of sight for vehicles, and the wall will be set back a minimum of seven feet from the sidewalk along Los Gatos-Saratoga Road. The wall will be faced with the same stacked stone used on the restaurant, and new drought-tolerant landscaping will be used between the wall and the sidewalk. The applicant has requested to utilize the same hours as the existing restaurant for the patio, which are 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to midnight on Friday and Saturday. While it is at the discretion of the commission to include this in their recommendation to the town council, the commission and the town council have historically restricted the use of outdoor patios, particularly when adjacent to residential uses. the use of outdoor patios, particularly when adjacent to residential uses, to no later than 10:00 p.m. daily. As a result, staff suggests the inclusion of additional condition restricting the hours of outdoor patio to 10:00 p.m. daily. The use of a restaurant in the downtown requires one parking space for every four seats. The property has 46 spaces in the parking district and 13 parking spaces on-site, for a total of 59 spaces. The proposed use requires only 40 parking spaces. In conclusion, staff recommends that the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the town council, and that the proposed use complies with parking, does not have an impact to traffic above that of the previous tenant, and complies with the town's alcoholic beverage policy. In addition, the applicant is proposing to locate the patio furthest away from the residential use to the rear, and would improve the appearance of the property frontage along Los Gatos Saratoga Road, which would include a new landscaping buffer between the proposed patio and the street. This concludes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Erickson?
So when the, thank you for your report, Ms. Mosley. When the police department reviewed the application, and they had no concerns or no comments, did they, what hours of operation were the, so did they have concerns about them operating, having operating hours on the patio beyond 10:00 p.m.?
They did not specifically mention any.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was just curious, I think I, you know, my sense says that this is not the case, but wouldn't they be the first restaurant to have outdoor patio on Highway Nine? Or am I missing something? I mean, I know, like, there's other restaurants in downtown, like Willow Street, for example, you know, we go there all the time, they have that, but they're on a much less traffic area. I was just curious, I mean, this is a first for Highway Nine, isn't it?
This would be the first, because the only other restaurant on Highway Nine is Double D's.
Okay.
And they don't have an outdoor patio out there.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Okay, we'll now invite, oh, sorry, we'll now open the public portion of the hearing, and give the applicant five minutes to speak. Alex Holt, you have five moment, five minutes to speak. Please make sure you pull the microphone up to you, and when the yellow light comes on, you have 30 seconds left.
I'm taller. So, my name is Alexander Holt. I'm the owner of Holtz Restaurant, together with my wife, Sarah Holt. I also live here since 2012, and I'm planning on living here, raising my kids here, becoming a big part of the Los Gatos community. Like Mike mentioned, I was on the board of Chamber of Commerce. I apologize. So it is very important to me that I grow my community role and act as a good role model. And I'm very open to questions as we're going over this, and I'm very grateful to have this opportunity to speak in front of you. Why am I here today? I'm trying to satisfy my guests at the restaurant. We were here in April last year, trying to add a liquor license. That was approved anonymously, and we're very grateful for that, because that was something that my guests really wanted. And after receiving it, we really have seen a busier bar scene, and something that really is kind of fulfilling the dining experience that we have tried really hard to create, where people come in, they have a nice drink after work, they have a nice meal, they sit, they relax, they have a two-hour-long dinner, and then they leave and they go home and they go to sleep. So, a couple of things that I want to mention that I think is very important in this submittal and this trying to get this done, is I don't understand the reasoning behind closing the patio at 10:00 p.m., when we are allowed to be open inside the restaurant till midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. I could potentially see a pretty big benefit for Los Gatos, having an option for young adults and/or clientele in general that is usually between 30 and 70. They want to come in for a nice experience, and in my opinion, there is a lack of a place to go for a couple that are dating, or a married couple that have a babysitter, they have their date night for the, their long work week. Friday night comes along, they go to Holtz for dinner, and there's absolutely nowhere for them to go after 9:00, 9:30, when they're done with dinner. So what I'm proposing is that they can now come outside, sit in a really nice-looking patio. We're not proposing to do the typical iron chairs, very uncomfortable, where you kind of sit down, eat, and leave. We're proposing to do, like, a little bit more upscale couch feel, like lounge-er, very nice-looking and very contemporary, that I think would really benefit our diners. And it would be a good way for them to round off their evening, sitting out there, having an extra little bite, maybe having their dessert out there. And I think, overall, it would be very important to not reduce the hours, because it wouldn't make sense to, if people sit down at 8:00 o'clock, and they, why would we rush them to leave after 10? It doesn't make sense, because we are not that type of a place where that would be a problem, in my opinion. I think it would be very nice to be able to keep serving them until the same hours that we have on the indoor. And then, there might be a discussion later when we talk about that wall that we're gonna build to, obviously, everyone knows Highway Nine, certain hours of the day is a pretty busy street, and how is it gonna look and feel to sit out there and have dinner. One of the reasons why I don't want the regular 30-inch tables, like dining tables, is because you need to come down a little bit lower to get that, that wall is supposed to, 42 inches is normally your regular private dining where noise doesn't really come in as much. And, thank you. And pretty much what I'm trying to say is that it's very important to me, if it's an option for, I don't know how this process really works, but in the plan, Marnie recommended to say four foot, so it goes from three foot and then up to four foot. I prefer if it could go from three foot to five foot. But I don't know if that's something that can change today or not. I just wanted to put that out there. I think a five-foot wall would be a lot better for the sound issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Badami?
So you described your furniture as being more upscale, more lounge-like. So does that mean it would stay on the patio overnight? Would you secure it?
It would stay overnight, yes.
Okay. Here's my concern. There's somewhat of a homeless contingent that lives, you know, right where the overpass-underpass is there with 17. So I can easily see people scaling the wall and, you know, taking a nap there during the night. And you might have some hygiene problems as a result. So it's just something to think about. And I'm not sure if the other commissioners might want to see the furniture brought in as we've done with other restaurants during the night.
Commissioner Talafour?
Thank you. Just to elaborate on that point, when you were describing the kind of furniture you, I see here on Exhibit G 3.0, I see tables and chairs. And then I just heard you say something about the furniture being couch-like?
Yeah, more like that comfortable, where you have a cushion, and it's not that iron rod where it's very uncomfortable to sit at.
Okay, I understand. So anyway, and then getting to Commissioner Badami's point, which is always my bailiwick, too, with outdoor restaurants, is the whole idea of the outdoor furniture. And in your proposed conditions of approval, number nine, which is in Exhibit Three, I don't know if you've read these, but it does say that the outdoor furniture, including tables, chairs, and heat lamps, shall be placed indoors at or before the close of business. Are you aware of that?
No, I did not read that.
Okay. Which is what we are requiring of other restaurants as well. So that's what I wanted to ask you about. And I have one more question. Okay, my other question is, the hostess stand, is that a permanent, what, can you describe that for me? What does that look like? I don't, it's, I haven't seen it in the elevations, and I see it pictured here on G.30 as a rectangle, but I have no idea what it is.
No disrespect to this beautiful table, but it's very similar to this, just a little bit more elegant and...
So that's a movable table as well? You would not be leaving it out there? Okay. And that's all for now. Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to make sure I understood your intent with the patio. It sounded to me like, the way you envisioned things to work, and if I said it wrong, please correct me. You, people would come in, they'd have their meal in the restaurant, but then they would go outside to the patio like it was a bar area?
No.
I mean, okay, good, because that's what I thought I heard you say. Because, okay, just if you could explain.
No, that is, the inside use and the outside use will be exactly the same. What I was trying to explain was that at the later, I know myself, what I was trying to explain is that at the end of the night, you know, if you have a good time and you're done with dinner, it would be nice to go sit somewhere with a little bit better ambiance. And me personally, I love sitting outdoor, where you can kind of sit and talk and catch up with your friends and finish your dinner maybe at a later hour than 10.
Are you talking about if they had dinner at your restaurant, or at another restaurant and came to your place?
In my restaurant, mostly.
Okay. So they're, they're meeting the requirement to have the meal by eating in your restaurant, but then they're gonna come out and have drinks without having food on the patio?
No, what I was kind of envisioning was, you come in and you have dinner, and if the patio is already full, by, by the time that they are done with their dinner and other people have moved, potentially being able to have, like, your dessert by the, like the nice outdoor ambiance, is kind of what I was thinking.
Can I ask a quick question? As far as the hours on the patio, did you reach out to, there's, I know there's not a lot of residential there, but did you do a little outreach and just let them know what you were proposing and get some feedback?
I'm really good friends with the only neighbor, and that is on the complete opposite of where the patio would be, and on the entire intersection.
I know, I know where it is. I just want to know if you...
I did not talk to them specifically about this, but I, I can personally say that they wouldn't have a problem with it. Because they are usually out there having fun when we're done closing the restaurant.
Commissioner Kane, you had a question?
With the chair's permission, I have a couple of questions. And I'm supposed to ask you questions, so I'm gonna put this in the form of questions. Do you understand that, no, when you talk about the hours that the patio should close at 10, and that that's not entirely okay with you, I think the response you're going to get is that the commission and town council have historic, have historically restricted the use of outdoor patios, presumably all over town, that they close them down at 10:00 o'clock. And they add, especially when it's adjacent to residential, to a residential property. I think that's the answer you're going to get, is because they haven't let anybody else do it. Is that correct?
I would look to Ms. Mosley. I'm not aware of any that have outdoor dining past 10:00 p.m., but Ms. Mosley probably has done further research on that.
I apologize. I have not done specific research on that. In the last probably five or six years, I'm not aware of any that the council has considered outdoor seating and not done that restriction on. So it's been a recent historical, any that may have allowances beyond that would predate the recent history. So using that trend by the council, we suggested that restriction.
Thank you. So that's what you may be up against. I wanted to ask some other questions. I've been in town 34, 35 years, and feel like there's been some erosion to the existing alcohol policy that the town has, which policy is fortunately undergoing review. But to what the commissioner is asking you, I need to know that you in fact understand, the proposed patio, just like the entire restaurant, would be required to provide full meal service with all alcohol sales. That is to say, you cannot get a drink without a meal. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Another item that concerns me with respect to erosion of the town code, is what you're promising the chief of police. In Exhibit Four of stamped submissions, it says, "All establishments shall use an employee training manual that addresses alcoholic beverages consistent with the standards of the state of California." So my issues are kids in bars, kids sitting at the bar, and, and drinks being given with a wink, and the fact that staff is not educated on these, on these conditions. So do you have a plan to educate your staff with respect to these conditions?
We already have that in place. We make them take about a seven-page test. I don't have that with me, obviously, I wasn't prepared. But if you'd like, I can submit such tests. It's called a Holtz Alcohol Test, and it goes over, like, when should they be ID'd, when should they not, you know, pretty much everything that has to do with alcohol. And it's, I would say, probably one of the hardest ones. I had to do some studying to find all the answers myself. And I, I think it's very important to, I take it very seriously. When we did get the ABC license to do the things the right way, and my wife is a preschool principal, and she's very, she's trying to get me in shape, do things the right way, and that way you don't have to redo it. And before, I was a little bit more, oh, let's just get it done. And then, after being married for two years, I've learned to do things the right way is usually the best way to do it.
I'm not familiar with the, with the entire ABC code, but I know that they, I'm led to believe that they restrict children sitting at the bar. So that's point number one. Point number two is alcohol will only be served with a meal. And those are my two points that I'm asking, do you have a plan? Shall you educate staff on these two points?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Kind of following up and making a little bit of a different question from what Commissioner Kane just asked. So hypothetical scenarios, so you've got, you've got people that are, you know, near age, you know, right around 21. So, so how does this process work? They, they come in the restaurant, they order their dinner inside. Who checks their ID? And then they decide to go outside, who checks their ID? And who checks to make sure that they actually ate inside? If there's a hostess sitting outside, how, how would they know if they actually ate?
It would be two different, separate people that they would order from. So there will be a designated server outdoor, and you obviously cannot bring the alcohol out on the street and then into the patio. So whoever they order from in the bar or inside in the restaurant would be in charge of checking their IDs, and we check IDs if they look younger than 30. And we're very tight on that, because I don't want it to become a problem. So I tell my staff all the time, did you check their ID? Did you check their ID? And sometimes, people kind of like, see it as a compliment. So it usually works out pretty good to do check IDs, pretty tight. My wife, in fact, was asked for, for her ID yesterday, and she was shining up like, like a sun. So my point is that there would be, you would get your ID checked inside, and then if you were to order something outside, that server would be in charge of their food order, ordering quarter on the, on their patio.
Okay, so that answers part of my question. The other part of my question was, going back to the use of the patio and not it being a bar. What's the process for checking to make sure that they actually ordered a meal, like they, and they, they did that before they came outside?
It actually would probably start over the process. So just because that they, you know, came from the inside or didn't come from the inside, it's still the same thing when they go on the outside. Like, that new server still have the same rules to follow. And I believe what, what the rules are saying is that we have to, as a restaurant, provide a full menu. It cannot just be snacks. And what we're planning on doing is serving our bar menu, or dinner menu, and our dessert menu on the patio as well.
Okay, so my husband and I come to your restaurant after this gets approved, and we walk out to the hostess outside and say, you know, we'd like to be seated, and... And is she going to ask me if I, if I'm ordering a meal? And what if I said I was already inside? I mean, I'm just not seeing how the process is going to work to keep this from people sitting there drinking and doing nothing else.
That's a good question. So the hostess would probably not ask, you know, are you intending of having a meal? The hostess would say how many people, and then where, you know, inside or outside. And then they would get it seated, and then the server would come up and ask, what would you like to eat? What would you like to drink?
Okay, well, I see that as a hole in the process that, you know, that I think you need to address.
Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Talasfor.
So I'm guessing this isn't the first time this bridge has been crossed. I would hope that what we apply to Hult's Restaurant is the same thing we apply to the other patio restaurants. And, and I would hope that you don't view the patio as a bar, because that's what's being said. They, they can't, it's going to be a sticky wicket if they have dinner inside and then go outside for more drinks, and they're joined by friends, and it, it's a sticky wicket. I, I wouldn't let them go outside, you know, just hold them inside. Because I don't know how to control the outside. And you've got to be very careful with that. But on the other hand, we want him to be held to the same standards that we hold other places that already deal with this situation.
So I think I'm going to ask staff really quick to clarify for other restaurants around town that have indoor seating and a patio. What kind of conditions have we put into the verbiage to ensure that it's not treated as a bar?
We don't have those other conditions with us, but just operationally, what typically has happened is that there's one hostess for the entire restaurant, and then the diners are given the choice, would you like to dine inside or outside? They are seated for their restaurant meal, and then they enjoy, you know, whichever choice they, they choose. You know, in looking at the draft permit in Exhibit 3, if the commission would like, they could modify condition number 5 to include, you know, that a dessert menu is not, would not be considered a complete meal. So if there's concern that this would become more of an after-dinner drinks as opposed to a full meal, you know, condition 5 could be modified accordingly. So that's another option. And then there's the proposal that staff gave to you regarding the patio hours, which is not in the draft condition, but if that's of interest would be part of, could be part of a motion to the council, because council makes the final decision.
Thank you. Commissioner Talasfor.
Well, just to, my input is that often I will go to a restaurant that has outdoor seating, and the hostess has said to us, this is for a meal. I mean, it's just, if you want to sit out here, you will, you have to order a meal. It just said with the, you know, with that in mind. So it could be one way to close the loop in that.
Absolutely.
Hole that we're looking at. But I do have a question for you. So it's a very busy intersection. Lots of cars, lots of brakes, lots of exhaust, lots of noise, and you want to put an outdoor patio. So I question that. And I, can you explain to me how you see it differently, or if you do?
I think that when you're sitting with friends, having dinner in a nice setting, and you have preferably a five-foot wall blocking all that off, all you're going to really see, because we tried this with a piece of plywood, and we sat there with tables and chairs. And all you really see on that's like looking outside. Instead of getting a busy street, now you're getting like the top, the trees, the mountains. You get like that really nice look. And also for the people, pretty much 80% of the people that have dinner inside, they sit along that one side on Highway 9. And they constantly complain that they get the headlights in their eyes and that it's not that appealing to look at a busy street. Some other people say that it looks like they're in New York. And I don't know what they're thinking, but that's a different story. So I think that the building the patio and the wall is going to like kill two in one. It's a Swedish saying, two birds in one stone, or whatever I believe is the American saying. It's going to make it a lot more appealing from the inside looking out, because now you're going to look at people moving around, and it's going to be nice ambiance. And then on the people that are sitting out there, they're going to be looking into a nice-looking restaurant. And the people looking in from the street, they are now, no longer going to see an old coffee shop, bakery, or diner. They're going to see an upscale restaurant, and that's what we are. And I think it's very important that we get that overall feel to kind of tie it all in.
Follow-up?
So I'm a little concerned now, you're asking for a five-foot wall. And I, I'm having a little hard time trying to visualize that five-foot wall is going to come how high on your windows? Because your windows are one of the main features of that building. It's 19, probably built in 1960, I would think. And that's, you know, it's significant as far as that design, whether you like it or not. It, it tells you in error that it was built. So I'm having a hard time seeing this five-foot wall and how that's going to work. And I don't have, you don't have a vision, elevation of it here, because you have a four-foot wall. So I'm, I'm, I'm stymied with how I'm going to.
So the reason, the reason why the four-foot, so the three-foot wall is, you know. For the traffic. That's very loud. So for the traffic problem.
You do actually have to take the microphone over with you, it comes out.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
I'll stay right here.
Right, I, I mean.
So pretty much what I wanted to say was that, you know, the, the three-foot, I completely understand because it's a busy street, you got to see the traffic. Hundred percent understand that. So the rest of the wall, it's pretty much halfway or so, maybe a little bit less than half, is three-foot. And then when it goes to four, it, that's just this much more. And then you might as well just do it three, and then it doesn't block the sound, which is the reason why I think it's so important to build it. But at five-foot, it comes above that 42 inches, which is seated privacy, and the noise will come over your head versus coming right in your ear. Because if you, if you sit.
I understand.
Like the wall will, at four-foot, it will literally go by your ear. And you're going to be, yeah.
I, I understand that. I'm thinking aesthetics of a long, solid wall like that in front of your building. And I'm having, I wish I could have a vision of that. And I see, where does the three-foot wall start? Is that where your last table is here, against the wall?
I don't have the blueprints in front of me.
So I, how many feet, I mean, I'm going to assume that staff checked as far as, with the police, as far as visibility along with that?
Yes, that is why it's reduced at that point. They did do the, based on the corner site triangle, they reduced it to three feet in that area. If you look at the last sheet of the Exhibit 7.
Right, I see that.
You'll see the elevations, and you'll see where that three-foot starts as well as.
While you're looking at it, I'm going to let Commissioner Badami go ahead and speak.
Do you plan on having speakers with amplified music for the outdoor patio area to kind of muffle the traffic from Highway 9?
No, but we're planning on having maybe some kind of water feature that will kind of create, it's called white noise apparently. I've been doing a little bit of research on this, and it helps creating ambiance, and it helps making it like soften the surrounding noise.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
In addition, I had a quick question, because we don't have any kind of landscape drawings. I would assume, you know, this question about the wall and the height, that it isn't just going to stay a wall. You're going to plant landscaping in front of this and soften the wall?
Yeah, so.
Something on the wall, I don't know, but.
Obviously, I'm up to, to modify my plans based on what town council and you guys would like to see in terms of those little details. But my vision is to have uplighting, because the wall is, I don't, are you, can you guys kind of picture the stone material? The stones are really beautiful. And with a little bit of uplighting on it, it really looks very presentable, in my opinion. And the natural, then, you know, we're in a draw, so we're trying to be conscious about, you know, not using water. So there is a lot of really nice draw-tolerant plants. If you, have you driven by the new project on Blossom Hill and Los Cadas Boulevard?
Yeah.
They have that, it's almost the same look of a wall in front of Phil's Coffee, and they also have draw-tolerant plants right in front of it. It looks really nice, I think. And I think that answered the question, I hope.
All right, do we have any other questions? Commissioner Talasfor.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I understand. I'm thinking that you do say draw-tolerant. Are you thinking of covering this wall with a vine of some type to soften, soften it in areas, or no?
I haven't thought too much about a vine. If that's what you guys want, it's not that big of a deal. I'm thinking more of like those nice, like different-looking California draw-tolerant plants to kind of soften it and make it look really artistic and nice.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Well, normally, we have people come and speak, and then you have three more minutes. So if you, aside from the questions, I guess if you have three minutes of anything else you'd like to address, you can?
Let me check my notes, and I will. No, I think we did a good job covering it all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing. Does anyone have any comments, question, or want to venture a motion? Commissioner Erickson?
So this is a question to staff. Is there any problem with the five-foot wall rather than the four-foot wall with respect, from a staff perspective?
Staff directed the applicant to reduce the wall height from the originally proposed five-foot down to four feet based on the just recently rescinded outdoor seating policy that was rescinded by the town council last night. So you would have the ability to increase that to five feet if you were comfortable with that additional height. Staff did feel that the four-feet actually helped integrate the patio with the sidewalk, which is the intention of outdoor seating primarily in the downtown.
But code-wise?
You would have the ability to. There is nothing that restricts you from, from providing that recommendation to the town council.
Okay. Commissioner Talasfor, then Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, the thing that bothers, wait, are we having, we're allowed to have, we're discussing now?
Yeah.
The thing that bothers me about the, the wall at five feet is that, that's what, that's what it is. It's a wall. So coming into town, you're going to see a wall. And I don't know what, it's not integrated into the design, it's an add-on feature. So I'm just having a little trouble with that visually. That's why I think vegetation would be extremely important to soften the appearance of it. I don't care what kind of stone it is, but it's, it's that, it's hardscape, and it's hard. And it's an entry point into town.
All right, Commissioner Hanson, Erickson, Kane.
Getting back to this question about the, the use, the actual use in, in making sure that it's in what we intended in our approval. Do we have any, any restaurant with, I don't know if you know the answer or not, that has outdoor seating where they have more than one hostess? Because it seemed to me like, I'm thinking of having gone to Willow Street many times. You, you go in the restaurant, inside, there's only one hostess. They ask you, do you want to sit inside or outside? And pretty much every restaurant I can think of is the same. And to me, that, having a separate outside hostess is very problematic. And I don't know if that's a limitation we could put on this, or that they have to enter in one place and, you know, to, so that there's a process to make sure that they're there to have a meal with drinks, not just drinks.
If the commission is interested in adding that to their recommendation, then they could do away with the hostess stand outside and just have all of the hostess serving or servicing from the interior, as I'm assuming it currently is.
Do we have an, an example of a restaurant that's, that's set up with outdoor seating, that's done that successfully, that also serves alcohol, that has two hostesses? No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Can I add one little note? So the hostess stand was actually a suggestion from staff based on, again, the outdoor seating policy that states that, that patrons that are seating on the patio should be seated by a restaurant hostess. There was a concern that by not having, by having the hostess from the restaurant inside and not having it overseen, the outdoor patio overseen consistently by a hostess, that there was going, that was going to be problematic if it was going to be open in the way that they wanted to do it. And so that was something that they included on the suggestion of staff. So if you have further recommendations and ways to accomplish that, that is your purview.
I, I had assumed it was for security reasons. I think it's probably a bit of a benefit for that reason, but actually, it's. No, it's Commissioner Erickson, then Kane, and then Commissioner Erickson, do you still have a question?
So the, if I'm, if, assuming the drawings are correct, I'm back to the wall. So the exit from that area that's at the very north end of that wall is, according to the drawing, six feet high. And to Commissioner Talasfor's concern about it blocking the, if you look at the drawing, there's quite a bit of window showing above that, but if I'm reading them right, so it would be essentially, if you want to visualize it, halfway in between where the top of the wall is now and that, that exit area. But the six, I assume, and the drawings don't show us this, but I assume the, the wall that's wrapping around on the north side, I believe that's north, anyway, to the, if you would, to the town parking lot, is six feet from that point wrapping around. Is that right? But I can't.
I do not believe it's delineated on the plans at this time. If you have directions, you guys, you can provide direction as to the height of that. It's not delineated, but it, it would be a safe assumption that it would be six feet.
Yeah, yeah, I couldn't find it either, so thanks.
Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Talasfor.
I share the concerns about the wall, not the height, but the appearance. And I thought, I thought there was a recommendation in here about providing some sort of appropriate plant coverage outside the wall. So whereas I'm not ready to make a motion, I'd like to consider in advance that the motion should include, subject to the approval of the community development director, there would be appropriate plant coverage, whether that's bushes spaced three feet apart, or four feet apart, or two feet apart. It would break up the appearance of a wall if he has indirect lighting on the wall from the outside. So we don't put in a hedge row, which would kill the lighting. We just put in plants appropriately spaced that presumably were at or would grow to the height of six feet. And it would just break up the, the appearance of a wall. It, it would give it a nice effect, especially with the indirect lighting. But beyond that, we don't design from the dais, but I'm just wondering if it's, if it's worth mentioning that if the, the wall runs east to west, and on the west side is where the hostess station is. I'm just wondering if we sealed that off. It's going to cost you a buck or two, but if we sealed that off and had a door in the restaurant, in the middle of the restaurant, so that when people came through the main doors, they told the hostess where they want to, where they'd like to be seated, and they were escorted to that seat by using the inside door rather than having to go back outside. If there's no inside door, then it seems to me that what's being suggested with two hostesses may be the only solution. But if we wanted one hostess, then you would have one access egress through the main door and then use the inside door to get to the patio. And what we're also saying is, you know, I hear what the applicant is envisioning, and I'm saying that's problematic. You make a decision to be outside or inside, and like all the other restaurants I know, that's pretty much where you stay. You don't then go outside for drinks with friends and create problems with other people joining you. I see his vision, but our experience is you sit inside or outside, and that's where you stay for the time being. So that's a whole bunch of stuff. Madam Chair, thank you.
I want to know if I can address your discussion on the doors. I want to know if I can address your discussion on the doors, constructability-wise and cost-wise? Because I had thought about the same thing, but if you go out the front of there, those columns in between the windows are structurally load-bearing and are quite old to renovate the front of that, to add doors in, that would meet code, would be a substantial cost and problem. So I looked at the same thing, but when I went and looked at it, it's asking a lot.
I know that's your expertise and I came up with a Plan B. Folks that are going to be sitting out there will likely get their food service through the back door. So there is a door that leads out on the, on the east side of the building. And if somebody wants to sit out there, then somebody escorts them through the restaurant and out that back door and onto the patio, which is sealed off. So you don't need two hostesses, is what I'm saying. You simply need a.
Actually, we've, unless we're going to open the public portion, I'm sorry.
So anyway, there is a door. If, I understand you want to stand these things better than I do. If you can't put a door in there, there is a proverbial back door that might be a solution.
Commissioner Talasfor?
So to comment on two hostesses or not, actually, I believe that the other restaurant in town that has two hostesses, one for the outdoor patio, one for the restaurant, is the wine cellar. So you can eat outside and if you don't want to, you can go downstairs and a hostess will show you somewhere in there. So that works quite well and I see a real need to have that done. So it, we do have precedence for it. But another, it's an architectural question about the wall. So I've noticed here on G 3.0 that if you look at the side lawn vegetation area that's next to the sidewalk, it does, it has a curve in it. Do you remember this? I'm pointing it out to you, I can't, but there's a curve in this wall, in this area here. What I was hoping is that the wall, instead of coming to a straight angle, could mimic the, the curve in that planted area. It would soften the wall a lot. I think it would add a little, a nice detail as well. So I would like.
I'm sure if you're ready to make a motion, we could potentially add that.
Okay. All right then, going to make a motion. I like how you do that. Interesting.
Putting that right on you.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion and then if my other commissioners have any conditions they would like to add, I will please, you know, jump in. So I will make a motion to approve conditional use permit U-14-025 at 165 Los Gatos Saratoga Road. The applicant is Alexander Holt. This is, by the way, a recommendation for approval to the town council. So my motion is not for approval, but is a recommendation to forward it to town council. I can make the general plan designate, I can make the findings as, as exhibited in Exhibit 2, which are required under SEQA and required findings for a conditional use permit as required by Section 292190 of the Town Code for granting a conditional use permit, and that would be 1 through 4. And required findings for the redevelopment plan for the central Los Gatos redevelopment project area and required findings for the town's alcohol beverage policy. And that would be A through C. And that's my motion.
All right, we have a second. I'll second it. Do we have any discussion or comments? Commissioner Badami?
I just, I just have a question. So does that mean your motion includes the hours till 12:00 a.m.?
No, the motion include, oh, yes, I forgot that recommendation by staff that the outdoor seating would be open only until 10:00 p.m. daily. And then I think, who else had something they wanted to add? Commissioner?
To the maker of the motion, I'd like to add language along the lines of, rather than us getting into plant design, the community development director knows what our intent is. So subject to the approval of the community development director, appropriate plant coverage, bushes interspaced as appropriate, be added to the outside of the wall, which wall is to be five feet?
Oh, we have to talk.
That's my.
I would feel, my opinion, if there's proper vegetation, the difference between four feet and five feet is pretty minimalistic. And if it creates a better sense of ambiance in there.
So my requested, my requested addition would be five feet if that's acceptable to the maker of the motion?
It is, especially, I would just like to know that the landscaping is actually to be chosen so that it actually breaks up the, the long run of that wall and softens it. And I forgot to add that I wanted to also have the east, oh, west, the west end of that long wall replicated, replicate the curve in the lawn planted area. I'm not sure how to describe that area.
Can I, can I ask you a question about that? Just to make sure.
Yes.
So even if you have that wall mimic the curve, you are going to have that new exit door exactly where it is because the walkway ramp meets ADA compliance and the slope of that is set by code. So that door is going to be where that door shows, that exit. So you're going to have a curved wall dive into an odd-looking corridor thing there.
Honestly, let me ask you this. If that wall was just slightly curved, could that work or not?
As long as you're fine with that, door is going to be exactly where the door shows because that existing walkway ramp that is existing is, I think, new. I think they just got updated recently with ADA. You can't mess with that. So that exit's going to be where that exit shows. So I think in light of aesthetics, instead of having it that odd, we should just keep the wall as it is. Clearly, the architect looked at that.
Okay, and we could add, add vegetation there, I guess. Okay, to soften that. All right, I could go with that. Okay, thank you.
Did you have another comment, Commissioner Kane? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. And there are no appeals because this is a recommendation to the council. Sometimes you get to the end of these meetings and you kind of feel like there should be, right? Like, all right. Exactly. Ms. Pravetti, do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
Just briefly, last night, the town council considered a request for a refund for the Bayview Second Unit. As you recall, they, it was illegally removed. They came before you, you approved the legal removal of it. They appealed to the council for a refund and the council granted it. It was because of the unique circumstances of that particular case and they were clear that it is not precedent-setting. We still do have openings on boards and commissions, so if you know of any friends who would be interested particularly in our Parks Commission, because we have no one yet who has volunteered, we extended the, the applications to the 15th of April and interviews will be held on the 21st of April. Thank you.
No, you cannot. Commissioner Hanson?
Are we allowed to ask a question of the staff report? I know one of the committees that's being recruited for is the Plan Development Committee. Is the Plan Development Committee going to have representation from the Planning Commission?
Yes, because it's the General Plan Committee plus the four, the two residents, one business and one developer.
Okay.
So, yeah, you will. All right, do we have any other Commissioner matters? No? All right, we're adjourned.